All right.
Yeah.
You ready, Rick, for the event?
I'm all set, yeah.
All right, following the meeting to order at seven oh two. A couple of announcements, we still have openings on the Affordable Housing Trust Finance Committee and the Conservation Commission. Second announcement is there's an event, it's called the Strong Towns Event, it's sponsored by Amesbury High School in partnership with MBPC, Newburyport, our own West Newbury Affordable Housing Trust, it's on Wednesday, September eighteenth, at six to eight P M. Now, you see, you know the speaker, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't know him personally, but by reputation, Chuck Morone, but going back to, you know, I had my master's degree in city and regional planning in the early two thousands. And Strong Towns and Chuck Morone, it's just one of, he's one of those kind of luminaries in the, in the city and regional planning field. Kind of a thought leader, if you like that term, but very well regarded, nationally recognized within the town planning community, which is, you know.
Huge.
Huge. So, yeah, it definitely caught my attention when Mayor Gob sent out the notice and shared it with Wendy as Chair of Affordable Housing Trust, and the Housing Trust had voted to co-sponsor it, so I think it's, you know, it should be a really interesting event.
Good. The other announcement that's not on our agenda, just want to make people aware that the town is having fields, let's say, Kentucky High School, the Page School, Pipe State Hill, and Action Co Playground will be sprayed for mosquito abatement on Monday, between seven thirty and twelve, this is by the Northeast Mosquito Control District. It's important to be aware of that, there's a notification. Suspend PoliZone, suspend SC and Zenmax, there's a, I noticed that went out on the town email, enabling the notes from the mosquito control district right there.
Just here, whether there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook, positive.
Well, this is in response to a lot of people demanding that something be done about mosquitoes, so, I mean, several towns.
So nowhere secure.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, there have been mosquitoes caught with the disease and as well as people who have died from it, so it's kind of a serious situation. But any questions, people can contact the, the help agent.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if we ever have any, any contact with them, I know, I mean, we've heard from them before, you know, Northeast Mosquito Control, whatever, I can't, I can't call the exact name of.
That's it.
As far as what they're spraying, obviously, there's a lot more focus in the last couple of years on effects on other insects. And, you know, not just effects on, on humans, obviously, that's their primary cause, but there's also, you know, the issue of what does it do to other insects? And some of them are, you know, like larkicides, I think, you know, it's like B T A, you know, they basically are, you know, species specific or critter specific biological control, but it would be good if somehow we knew, we had more info on what they were using and what the impacts were on both people and, and other critters.
So that they provided notification with the chemicals listed, and there's a link to the S D, the safety data sheet, so, I mean, you can start there. I think there may even be contact info from the district, let me just pull up the notice. Probably the best thing, yeah, they do have contact information in the notice, so you can reach out to them if you're curious. So next item is public comment, anybody here that has a public comment? Anybody online, it's not, so we'll move on to town manager updates.
Okay, the first update, there's a memo in there from Butch, he's following the meeting that we had with M E V A back on the fifteenth, he got in touch with their facilities manager, Ed Nutter, there was some correspondence there, and they were able to connect onsite last Monday, and the direction was to identify what would make the most sense as bus stop locations, so you can see in Butch's memo, both the ones that have been kind of the, the two identified locations and other potential locations, so obviously, this came up on a, you know, on us very little notice, so I want to definitely commend Butch for getting right on that, and so I think it'll, it'll roll out over time as basically there's time to, to field check the locations, and, and it's very important, certainly, Butch and I have talked about the importance of direct engagement with the director Butters, make sure that everybody knows what's going on, and that things aren't done without proper process and notice, so the fact we received notice, so, you know, on such short notice, that didn't give us the time to really have everything in place when the buses started rolling earlier this week, so.
So there's two locations now?
Yep, with, with likely additional more, yeah.
And, and they, the buses started running on Tuesday, is that right? Yeah, it's interesting, I went online on Monday, and the route wasn't up, it hadn't started to run yet, but I thought they might have it up. And so I haven't gone back and looked yet, I'm assuming now it's up there, yep.
And it first ran through Tuesday, and obviously, it's a flag system still, so if there are popular places, and we find that more likely people will pick up at a certain place, then these are something you should consider.
There wasn't there talk about a select board meeting on the.
I think we should do that.
I mean, seriously, is there like a good opportunity to publicize it by having the board members?
Absolutely.
Let us know. All right, we'll just add that to our September meetings.
So we'll catch, was it, there's like a five forty stop or something in the morning, we'll catch that one.
All right, next item, Middle Street Bridge Invitation for Bids, I think the last update you had on the fifteenth was that that was on the cusp of being issued. Since been issued, I, I only included just the, basically, the newspaper ad in the packet, but the entire bid package is, as you would expect, hundreds of pages with all the specs and plans and conditions and so on and so forth, a huge amount of coordination over a period of, actually, over a year, but intensively for probably about eight weeks to get that finalized and issued, went through all the proper, you know, postings with D O T and the Central Register and so forth. So the next key milestone with that, obviously, the bids are due October first, so that's a huge milestone. But prior to that, we have the onsite site visit September seventeenth, and we have a pre-meeting scheduled for next week, including the project engineer, city personnel, and obviously, our, our people, so that we're kind of, have everything organized for the site visit on the seventeenth. So that's continues to be a major.
How many bids have looked at the documents?
So far, seventeen prospective vendors have contacted Kate and then requested the bid package, so that's, you know, promising. The Route One Thirteen Quarter Planning Initiative, Christine and I had a meeting that had been on the calendar for a while, just yesterday, with D O T. And that was facilitated by our consultant, T E C, it was about an hour-long meeting, very, very positive meeting. We've had a number of discussions previously with Paul Stedman, the district engineer, and, and a couple of others that we work with in District Four, but this was somewhat, somewhat higher in the organization than D O T, and so it was intended to kind of get the corridor study on their radar on, at a kind of a higher level, get some advice on process, which really validated the approach that we've been taking, and I won't say there were any surprises, but things like the importance of, of having a concept plan, the necessity to have things at a certain stage of readiness before they're submitted for the T I M for consideration for, you know, construction funding, and some of the discussion was about basically, the pros and cons of looking at, well, it, it makes sense to look at the corridor in a cohesive way, but a project that would be submitted for the T I M is much more likely to be a subset of that, whether that's, you know, the middle high school crossing, or the library crossing, or the, you know, town center, or what have you, is going to be a much more of a discreet project, that is going to be more realistic in terms of engineering and, and construction funding. So that's, we're working toward what's going to be a major public meeting later this fall with T E C, and that's going to be one of the major questions presented to the public, but really, to this board, as the roadway commissioners, to provide policy direction on how to prioritize among the, the six different nodes that have been identified as, as crossing locations, as well as, you know, potential sidewalks, and basically, how to prioritize, because there's a lot of important things that would be great to get done, but they'll all take time and money, so we got some good feedback on that, we remain on track with the schedule that we've anticipated for some time now, which is getting the Page Pipe Save Crossing fully permitted this fall. And T E C continues to tell me that they think that we could, if we chose to, have a placeholder request for the Fall Town Meeting to construct that. Actually, I forgot to mention, earlier this afternoon, Rick had asked me about whether there might be any Capitol articles, and I forgot to mention it, so. But anyway, so once I have something from them on that, you know, you'll be the first to know, but and then also, I think you're aware, we had signed a separate contract with T E C back in the early summer. We had the earmark to look at the middle high school crossing with NIX, and so we have them under contract to do conceptual design for that, and we're going to have a site visit with them on either the twenty second or twenty third, with myself, Butch, Dwyer, Jonathan Seymour, Christine, and we'll, we'll reach out to MBPC, and ideally, have someone there as well, that's just a very introductory walk around, but I think it's going to be good to see that project get the same kind of attention that the Page Pipe Save location has gotten over the last couple of years. The Page Masonry, what would you think about shifting that to later in the agenda discussion with the new memo that came in today? That's something that I think is going to generate some discussion, so maybe we can remember to come back to that one when we get to item.
Jim, are you noting that, thank you.
Next item, just a brief update, this has been in the works for, for a while, but I got the update from Dwyer recently that they have successfully moved the telecom equipment off the Park and Rec Building, so that had been in the works for some time. So that's something we'll be looking at with the updates to the Capitol program, to see if we want to try to put together a proposal for next Springstown meeting to potentially demo the Park and Rec Building, and, but we got to think through what would, you know, what would be there in its place, would it be, you know, parking or?
Trees or pickleballers, you never know, but.
We'll look around.
Yeah, follow the guys. And then there were a couple of other updates, let's see, I did go to this mayor's managers administrators meeting at MBPC for the better part of this, this morning, there were some really interesting updates, very worthwhile, there were about twenty-five people. The Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, including Arrow Plan, has now been approved by M E M A, that happened just earlier this week. It's now under review by FEMA, that typically takes about forty-five days, once FEMA approves it, it will be brought, brought back to this board for formal approval, so you can expect to see that later this fall. They also provided some updates on the Vision Zero Safe Streets for All Grant, which you'll remember, Chris might not, because I think this was before you were on the board, but a couple, maybe a year and a half or two ago, MBPC had asked West Newbury to sign on to the grant for the Safe Streets for All, we did. Christine and Chief Dwyer have been engaged in that, and that regional plan was just released for public comment. I haven't received a link to it yet, but once I get that, I'll send it around, and they also rolled out a really interesting, something that I think would be good for maybe the next agenda, but the C S O Early Alert Tool, really, really interesting. It's dynamic reporting on, on C S Os, and it's got a ton of data, I only just spent five minutes kind of perusing it, but it's, it's pretty impressive, and that would be something that we could, you know, include on the next agenda, just for, but, but you can find it on the MBPC website if you're, if you want to see it sooner than not, so that's that, some other brief updates. Want to recognize our treasure collector, Caitlin Gilbert, just this week received certification as a certified Massachusetts Municipal Collector. She had already been certified as a treasure, but now she's certified for both of her roles, so that, that was a definitely a professional milestone for her. She worked hard to get with the site, the water, the search for water. We have, the site evaluation is scheduled for this coming Monday, with Heyger Richter is going to be onsite at the and that's all in coordination with Butch, and I keep a mark up rise to that, so that's something, if anyone, if it's, if it's convenient, and one wants to stop by, by all means, that's great, I don't have a time yet, I talked to them this afternoon, I talked to Weston and Samantha this afternoon, and they said we'll, we'll hear from them tomorrow, would be exactly what time we're going to be.
I'm just curious to see the process.
I am, yeah, I think it's fascinating, yeah.
And is it definitely Monday, or?
It's definitely Monday, yeah, it's definitely Monday, yeah. Yeah, the only, they had only said, you know, there was some like bad weather or something, but, yeah, yeah.
I think we can get, we can take turns swinging the sledge.
Go for it. You'll let us know once you find time.
Yeah, 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 I'll, I'll hear from them tomorrow. Let's see, the we, we have, you know, received some information recently about the water tank and some potential issues there. There is a Water Commission meeting coming up on Tuesday, so we'll be, you know, following that closely, and I've offered the engagement of town council, raised the prospect of insurance and whether there's coverage. It seems like there's some, some repairs that are going to be needed, so unfortunately, the meeting that was scheduled for Tuesday afternoon conflicts with, with something, so I can't be there. So maybe, if you can be there, we can talk more before Tuesday's Water Commission meeting.
Okay.
Can you make it, Rick, or?
It's at two o'clock.
Maybe they want us to be there.
Yeah.
So how long ago was it completed, and what's the warranty, obviously?
That's, well, I was, I was, it was completed, I'm guessing, but I'd say three to four years ago, probably.
It shouldn't be having this many problems this early down the road, so it's a bigger concern than just the repair.
You got that right, absolutely, I have, I have real questions as to the inspections that were, you know, that took place, and the sign-offs that took place. This is, as you know, the second time this will have to be repaired since it came online, so there's, we have questions about the vendor, we have questions about the inspections, we have questions about.
Oversight.
Everything. So, you know, the Water Commission's.
No, it's not clear, I'm not a warranty person.
Yeah, well, and, and the response I got today from the inspection engineer was, was completely unsatisfactory, so where, you know, I'm, I'm back with the chair, I know the Bob, and I, you know, I've been keeping, you know, I'm in touch with Mark just about every day on this, to kind of learn what I can learn, but I did meet with Bob today, and I, I told him, you know, my, my observations that I'd sent to Mark, you know, about regarding the, the consultant, I, I think we're not being well, well-served, but as you know, that's not a contract.
Who's the consultant?
The, the engineering itself.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's not a contract we sign, yeah.
So have we confirmed that the contract with Groveland is still valid?
No.
Okay, I think that's important, because, yeah.
Yeah, and a stat, Mark has, has talked to his counterpart in Groveland and, and gotten an indication that they're, they're honoring it. But in terms of is it legally valid, I think we would question whether it was ever legally valid, because, you know, they, the only entity with the authority to enter municipal green is this board. So, yeah, we got a lot of questions on that.
All right.
Some other?
I can't make it, there's two o'clock.
Two o'clock, yeah. All right, a few other things, I'll try to keep it brief, so Elsie Hill, variance application, there have been some questions that came up to town council, as well as one of the Z B A members had some questions that he directed to this board and your capacity roadway commissioners, so that is something we'll want to get on a future agenda. The applicant has requested a continuance of the public hearing, which had been scheduled to continue next Wednesday. That is not going to now happen until October, so there's more time, so. I had a meeting earlier this week with Dave Remmer from Greenbelt, along with New Conservation Agent and with Butch regarding Coffin Street property and the Cortland Lane access, a very, very positive meeting, basically, the follow-up is, you know, we've asked Greenbelt to put together a physical plan for what would happen within the right-of-way, which is under this board's control in regard to, you know, the parking, the signage, fencing, and so forth, so that that could be put before this board for, you know, for you to review a tangible, because we all know conceptually what's been talked about and agreed to, but, but to have it, you know, and they are on the verge of filing for a notice of intent for the trail work interior to the property, so that, that, you know, and we've wanted to go all along, we've wanted it to be kind of in coordination and timing once.
So are they, is there N O Y just for that area, I noticed some wetland markers down along further up Coffin Street, where the trail, you know, near the wells, where the trail is going to be caught in?
That's where the N O Y is.
So it's not for Cortland?
No, there's no wetlands for Cortland.
So, so is this, the, I guess what I'm asking, is this all going to be done as one project, or are they going to piecemeal the different?
Well, so, so the, the Cortland work won't need any Concom review.
Right.
So that's really just before this board as, as the custodial entity for the right-of-way.
I'm just asking, are they going to piecemeal the individual, like with Concom as one project, and then they're going to do the Cortland Lane with us? Are they, like, doing the whole development of the property at once?
We would like to do it all at once, yeah, and we would like to not have our works mobilized until it's in, in sync with the timing of getting the trails cleared, you know.
Can we jump back to Elsie Hill?
Yeah.
I had a question, does the select board have an opportunity for input on that?
Yes.
Because at that meeting, we were all very silent, deliberately so. But I think what we saw as a perceived outcome was fairly dangerous as far as the future of the town. So I think before the next meeting, we ought to have that on the agenda to discuss, so that we can.
Answer our?
Yeah.
Good, yeah, totally agree, and happy to, to talk further offline on that as well, but, yeah, both, you, you, you obviously, at any time, can weigh in as a board or as individuals on any, any permit application, but beyond that, with your, in your capacity as roadway commissioners.
But we didn't have consensus as a board, we were sitting viewing them.
No, I understand, that wouldn't, that wouldn't have been the time to do it, I agree with that, but, yeah, so, yeah, there's been a fair amount of back and forth that I can, you know, I can send along, we can, but I, I totally agree with you, but you should have that on, on the next agenda.
Just some time to have a good ten minutes to talk about.
Yeah, they haven't set a date for the continuation, Jan Geary was pulling the Z B A members earlier today just to get their availability, and it looks like it's probably going to be the second week of October, but a date hasn't, they haven't landed on a date that works for everybody yet. Next update, the fiscal impact analysis, I did go ahead and sign a contract with Frank and Haiti, F X M Associates, have them at Poise, very, very excited to get them underway, I actually had an initial call with them yesterday for about forty minutes, very substantive call. They're, they're absolutely the right people to do this work, really, really knowledgeable and experienced, and they are going to send us probably in the next day or so their data requests, and obviously, the better the data they get, the better their report, and.
It's on the M B T A?
Yeah, on the M B T A community, so the, it's nice that we do have a little bit of runway on this one, and I, I basically told them, we're going to get excellent data, as long as I'm not calling Kentucky and saying, I did this yesterday, like, as long as we're giving people a proper amount of time, data, we can get them excellent data, and so once I, and once the new town planner starts, what, you know, that person will be right at the table for that, but I wanted to at least get things started so that they can kind of get underway, so I feel, feel good about that. Town Planner Hiring Process, we've completed the interview process, we do have a candidate that I'm working to get a written offer to tomorrow, and Rebecca and I were just doing reference checks over the last couple of days, and they validated what we, what we all could clearly see, which is a very highly qualified and a very talented planner.
What's the potential start date?
I don't want to get ahead of myself, but pretty soon.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty soon, fingers crossed. And then finally, just wanted to remind everyone that the annual audit begins a week from Monday, the sixteenth, so that's going to be a huge focus that whole week, I'm trying to keep my calendar as clear as I can, you know, with Jenny and Kim and Caitlin, that's, it's like all hands on deck with audit. I think we're going to be very well prepared, we received the OPAD actuarial report earlier this week, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but we did get it. We're working with Water to get the documentation we need from them regarding the rate change. You probably recall from prior cycles that where the budget increased, you know, we need to prove to D O R and to the auditor that the revenues are going to support the expenses, so Jenny has been working with Water Commission to get that, and has got a draft that's in pretty good shape, so I think we'll be, we'll be okay for that. So that's.
That's all, that's wonderful, all right, thank you.
Not much, right?
So I want to move ahead to some of the action items, Jim, did you tell the associate planner candidates a time?
Okay, I'm Molly.
Okay, Molly, and we have Jeff and Ted, so there's Nathan Dudley, is he here, or online? I don't want to start unless they're all here, but.
But you said there was one person who didn't come yet, was that, was that? Possibly.
Well, it must be the other three are here, so, do you think we can go ahead, I guess they're true.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as there was no time, I don't want to go too early, if you can hear the stem or something. So before we get started, thank you all of you for putting in an application. Obviously, there's one position, and we have several other really important openings on committees, so is there anyone that would like to take their name out of the running and perhaps choose another committee, I just want to start with that, or is everybody really focused on this?
Tell them about the bandwagon, I looked at the four of them, it's like, all the most amazing, all of a sudden, they just came for this one, it's like, can we spread them out elsewhere in the town committees, it's like, this would be magnificent.
Affordable Housing Trust Finance Committee and Conservation Commission, all really important committees that have openings.
Zoning Board as well.
What's that?
Zoning Board as well.
There's an opening on Zoning Board? Oh, Zoning Board of Appeals, awesome. Gary, you know?
I'm flexible, I would be happy to help anywhere, so.
What, I just, we'll, so we'll start with Molly, do you want to just tell us briefly what your interests are, or are you?
So I, I'm a town, obviously, I'm a contractor in Beverly, I've been about six and a half years, a little bit in operations, and now I'm involved in sales and marketing. So the planning work position is just appealing to me, kind of being on MBPC side, senior eyes and stuff, I just thought it would be kind of fun to learn, you know, town and bylaws, zoning laws, all that stuff, I mean, we deal with the building departments and some permits, but not so much presidential domain or anything, so that was what appealed to me, but I wasn't aware of the other positions that were open, so if we were to find somebody a better fit, I would be happy to talk about the others.
Great, thank you, Ted, do you want to go next?
Yeah, hi, nice to meet everyone, thanks for, for having me. So, yeah, I would say I, I am kind of passionate about this topic, so I'd like to, to stick with, with this one. I actually, so I spent most of my career, my early career in tech, in the tech world, working for, you know, various startups in, in Boston, and I built a real estate business, basically, buying rental properties and, and kind of, you know, doing value-add rehab and that sort of stuff, renovations to those properties and renting them out over time, and that's grown into development, so currently, I, full-time, I, I'm a multifamily property developer, so I work in Merrimack Valley predominantly and, and Haverhill at the moment, so very kind of passionate professionally and personally about this space. I've been a resident of West Newbury for nine years now, I live on River Road, love all the things about our town, and, you know, this particular topic again, is, is one of interest to me, so, yeah, just want to, you know, give back to the town, figure out how I can take my skill set and my knowledge, and, you know, help, yeah, help, help others move forward.
All right, great, so Affordable Housing Trust, we could really use somebody like you, especially with experience in developing, we're, we're kind of, you know, trying to get our wheels under us in terms of actually building some affordable housing in town, so just ponder that.
All right, thank you.
All right, Jeff, hello?
Hi, great to meet you guys, I'm a brand-new resident of West Newbury, I've just moved there just this past month from Seattle, Washington. I've been doing project and planning development in the professional space, primarily in the energy space, and in research and development in earth and space sciences for the last twenty-five years, so while planning and development is sort of my, sort of my shtick, I'm also very interested in being part of the town. Really, saw this as an opportunity to become engaged and be an active citizen. I'm also very interested in being part of the town, really um saw this as an opportunity to become engaged and be an active citizen and learn about the town and become really a, a very active part of, of the town. I find that my, my wife and I, we, we simply love it here and want to see it thrive and wanna be an active part of, of managing the town in a successful way. Um if my skills were better suited to another part of the town, I would be very interested in considering that as well. Um I had not done residential planning, have been involved in a lot of commercial and uh industrial development projects. So have experience there just from a management point of view, have seen, having grown up on the west coast and particularly Southern California, I've seen a lot of development um done poorly, so have a lot of personal experience um observing that over time, uh that how that's mistakes, even with the best intentions, other mistakes have been made in the past on the west coast and don't wanna see that happen in West Newbury, but so.
All right, thank you. Um Chris, and Rick, any questions or? Comments you wanna offer?
I think all through.
Yeah.
Would be amazing. I'm surprised Rick didn't jump on with the energy and the sustainability for Jeff. I mean, it's like, he's right in that wheelhouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping to learn more about that, yeah, I've heard.
All I'm gonna say is, all four of you can fit into integral parts on committees in this town, so only one of you is gonna get to the planning, so I hope the other three will pursue other uh openings on these uh boards and committees because I looked at your resumes and quite honestly, they're all outstanding. I'm not gonna make a motion, I'll wait and follow all this.
Yeah, I, I guess I would just say, Jeff, I, I was kind of a, you know, I have, you know, interest in sort of energy type stuff. Um and, and um you have a pretty interesting background. It sounds like uh uh you're in the end, you're in the, in the uh arena of what I would call real geothermal as opposed to ground source heat pump type geothermal, which get used, the words get used interchangeably, but, but um I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how you ended up on the east coast in that particular line of business, cause we don't have a resource here, but I'm sure there's uh enough research going on that it makes sense for you to be here.
Um well, we're developing a very deep drilling tool based on technology of development MIT, so our uh business headquarters are in Boston.
Okay, interesting.
But I, I am actually currently in Houston with the rest of the company, which is where we're actually doing the tool development, so you're ready.
Okay, okay. Cause they know how to drill down there, right?
Different end product.
Yeah, right, exactly. No, I, I like your end product more though, so uh um okay.
Yeah, so the planning board just basically passed this along to us, which.
Right, yeah, no, you're, everybody here is great. Um uh it, not to focus overly on Jeff, but Jeff, if you would wanna talk with us at the, in the, there's also an energy and sustainability committee and quite honestly, um you kind of have more horsepower than you're, you're, you're um, you know, what you're doing is is, what we're doing is mundane relative to where you are in, you know, the energy space at this point. I, you know, I just, I, I, I don't, I don't like to overstate, you know, I mean, you know, um so, so uh um but if nothing else, it'd be interesting at some point to uh, to hear um, you know, for the committee to hear to understand what you're doing, just for our own edification about what else is going on.
I would love to come by and talk. I'd love to get a talk.
Um uh and um if, I mean, Ted, I find your um, you know, your, your experience, your profi, you know, where you are professionally is pretty directly relying, aligned with, I think, with, with the planning board. Obviously, you mentioned the housing uh the uh Affordable Housing Trust too, I mean, either, either way, um I think that, you know, your experiences um you know, really could be, you know, really directly contributory to either, either uh either committees or either bor, ones aboard, ones of committee.
Make a motion then.
Okay.
Make a motion to support uh Teddy, I'm gonna see you associate position to the planning board.
I, I'll, I'll second. I, I, I didn't get a chance to say anything to, to, to Nathan, cause you're on the spot. Yeah, yeah. Um but yeah, anyway, I, I, I second your, your, your motion.
Well, I, I would suggest maybe Conservation Commission, there's a lot of planning meeting and um I think some real construction experience could be helpful for the commission. If you're interested in that, check out the webpage. Um we have a new conservation agent and a pretty active commission, so I think you would be a great fit. We appreciate it if you consider it, yeah.
Again, zoning board of appeals. And these people could work well in any of these committees, if you look at their resumes.
Yeah, so I hope this is not the last time we see you, Jeff, and, and Molly and Nathan wherever he is. So, all right, all in favor of appointing Ted?
I.
I.
Um before we go, so Jeff, if you um, you know, if you were to reach out to to town, to the town clerk um uh who's here, um Jim, and um he can give you my contact info. It'd be interesting just to, you know, see what you, when you're in town, you're in Houston right now, I guess, but when you're in town. Um it'd be interesting if we can coordinate with one of the committee meetings and uh just talk.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to come back. I'll be back, I'm excited.
Great, thanks.
All right, Ted, so if you come in and meet with the town clerk, you get sworn in and
Yep.
Do whatever you have to do, great, thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, I'm looking forward to working with you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks. Thank you all for the application, it's amazing.
Yeah, yeah, really is.
Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
Okay, let's move, I assume the rest of you are here for Apple, for the uh Apple Harvest. Okay, so we have three items regarding that. The first is the request for a special event permit. This is the Apple Harvest run on October tenth. Any questions from the board on the application?
Uh if it's all right with you, I'll recheck to Nathan about zoning.
Did you have any questions on this, Chris? All right.
On the application, it says uh trash cans are receptacles, it said throughout the park. Does that mean they're existing and they're bringing in their own? Same with the bathroom facilities, it says near the baseball grounds. I just wanna know if there's, if there's the existing ones or are they supplementing?
Yeah.
Uh so the bathroom facilities are now where definitely like board parties that get put in.
Oh, they are, Brian, it's not using those there.
Yeah, and uh I mean, you can do the same thing with the, with trash barrels.
We reached out to, sorry, we reached out to Gmail um about leaving a dumpster for us and we would have smaller trash barrels so we can put all the trash in the dumpsters and Gmail would pick it up.
Right, same with signage and road markers, it's gonna be signs that are set on the side versus spray paint on the street or something like, just a question.
So it, it depends on which signage, so there's gonna be like advertising signs around for it, like the, you know, the, like the political signs that are around. Sometimes so there'll be those, that's pretty much in people's yards, like, you know, up to them. And then um I actually helped out with the signage along the route um last year, so I didn't actually do the the spray painting, but somebody, I think maybe we do a little bit there. Um they painted in black on the road, like here's the start, here's mile one. Mile two, et cetera, and then we put signs on stakes um to designate a different thing, like the starter. I want wherever depending on which ports it goes, and then um took them down at the end of the day. And there were also um some tables along the route with water and stuff, so. Went around that day last year, but you might have seen some of the tables around and then we just cleaned up those tables like years.
So did you talk to the highways superintendent about spray painting the roads? Is there any concern there?
Oh, we had, not yet, no.
Well, I don't have a problem with the black paint, cause it's, you can still see something from last year, but you don't see it.
I just feel like it would be good to, this is Bush Hills, just be good to modify and be aware.
They do make a temporary paint up there, one or two. I just had a, I saw something, something I gotta strike. Other question, the, I know it ran by uh the police chief. I, I would just question on the, it's the five K run, you go down Stewart into Arcolis and back across, that's gonna be a lot of I don't know how many people actually went to five K versus the five mile.
I don't know the number off the top of my head.
I had intersection, it couldn't, I mean, there's not a lot of cars generally, but you got runners coming down, they go in, they go out, you're gonna be tripling the amount of volume there.
Yeah, I mean, they do, they go, they turn, they go up Stewart and then up to us and then back.
Right, so that intersection's gonna be heavily trafficked with runners. And the police chief didn't suggest anybody there, but I'm just questioning.
Yeah, that's a good point, so. Re, rewind a traffic there.
And, yeah, cutting straight across the road, I don't, it's not a heavily trafficked road, I understand, but
Yeah.
But do you have a volunteer there to watch out? Cause they're coming down the hill too, it's not a insignificant intersection.
Did you discuss this with the police chief, whether details needed or not and?
Uh I have not discussed it yet, but he saw, he saw the.
It's, it's the same route that they've had for the past few years at least that I.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And they haven't had a detailed class?
Not that I know of, no, we can, we can probably put some volunteers there, well.
Well, I think there's kind of, that's discouraged if it's traffic control, it needs to be the police department, but, but you might just wanna check in with him and make sure.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly do that, I think we were kinda um wanting to get the applications in, get it kind of in front of new folks and then uh we'll see what the next steps are, so if, if you'd like.
You said one, one main street, the traffic control, that's it, so.
Yeah, I just, I think that's a good point that you made there, might just be, yeah, so just so you're aware, part of the application is that the police chief has signed off on this, so if there's an outstanding question, then we might wait to approve it and to leave it back, so it gets back to us.
I, I have a question on the application, on his uh number four, it says participant circulation and the answer is via run, run signup dot com and signage. I, and uh I'm not concerned, I just don't understand. Um I guess I don't, when it says participant circulation, I'm not quite sure how to interpret that, and then I'm not further, I'm not sure how to interpret.
The answer.
The answer.
Jim, what, what is the intent of that question?
Uh that, that question predates my existence.
But you're now on this application, so.
Can I say what I interpreted it? I, I was assuming it was how are you gonna get this circuit, the word of this circulated to the participants, so.
Sounds great.
I don't think that's the. That, I think that would be advertising. I think that's more like people circulating within the, the event. That's my understanding.
Okay.
So what did you, oh, so you described how you would get the word out, basically.
Yeah, like circulating the.
Information about.
Yeah, okay, I, I guess I can see how that's. Yeah, yeah, see, we don't know what the question means.
I understand what it means too, you know, how people get from A to B.
Yeah, yeah, so let's go back to the bicentennial, they, they had the big field day and you know, we had to uh remind the bicentennial committee, we ended up getting our EMA volunteers uh involved and they helped direct traffic and went very, very well. Bicentennial committee hadn't, hadn't thought of that, they hadn't been thinking of that, and it's like, you, you're gonna have maybe a thousand cars. Like you need to have traffic control, so it all worked out, but, but I think that you're right, Wendy, that it's like vehicular circulation. Yeah, and is there any need for, you know, flaggers to that kind of thing?
Okay. So maybe just to follow up with the police chief to see um if he has any thoughts on that?
I mean, they've done this, uh, uh, fifteen years in a row.
But this, you guys were involved last year, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I ended up permitting parts, I guess.
I was very little involved last year, this is the first year I'm far more involved.
Yeah, and I feel like last year we had a couple people that it was their second year, but they had no experience before this, we're just
Yeah.
And, and we're also trying to make this application more useful and productive, so don't, don't take the questions like it's.
I believe it's third or fifth year.
So any, any other concerns on this or questions?
Not for me.
No, do we wanna approve it pending?
Approval of the police chief.
And Bush as well, yes, that'd be great.
Yeah, and, and actually, I didn't see, there is food, right?
Yes.
And border health is already.
I spoke with Paul yesterday and he sent me the permits and I'm gonna fill them all up. We had a brief chat, I've got my certification. Um I'll be handling most of the food, so.
Okay.
So maybe dependent on that as well.
This is just for the application for the event?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for the pending approval of the police chief and verification about paying with Bush.
And receive as the. Okay, the next is a request for one day liquor license, beer and wine only for the Apple Harvest run. You wanna describe what the overall situation with that would be?
Yeah, absolutely. We were able to uh get in touch with River Walk Brewery and Newbury Port and uh they do a lot of community involvement stuff. Um and in years past, they've had uh beer vendors down there, I believe, a couple years ago was Newbury Port Brewery. Um so, you know, for the run particularly, uh runners are, are very I would like to say that they're, they like to have a beer at the end of their run. Um I think that it's also a good, you know, pair of food that we have coming and it keeps people engaged to play part of the carnival games and to bid on some of the other uh promotional stuff that we have there. And uh River Walk was also kind enough to donate a dollar for every uh beer that they sell to in reimbursement, so.
Any specific questions on that?
Anybody serving the alcohol, be tip certified as soon?
Their bring staff, they'll, they'll manage the whole operation. Uh they have tip certified service. Uh the manager of River Walk is going to be there as well, so.
So I assume people over twenty-one get a bracelet or something?
Yes, so at, at the entrance to the carnival plan, I'm sorry, the entrance to the field, um there'll be somebody there that's uh tip certified, that'll be giving everybody bracelets, checking your ID. And you will be able to get into the beer tent area, this will be sort of in the middle of the, the long. Um you will be able to get into that area, it's all sectioned off, and you wouldn't be able to do without a, a wristband.
Any other questions?
Uh if anybody else has anything, I believe that we would uh approve the uh one day alcohol um permit.
Second.
And final request is for a waiver of the facility's use fee for the annex and the van stand. Um so what, what is the annex being used for?
That's like for a staging area, because like, you know, as you know, it's like right, very close, so where the volunteers can go. Um there, there are T-shirts, boxes of T-shirts and stuff that need to be stored somewhere else, all those signs like before they go out into the roads and so.
So it's more for the production of the race, it's not?
It would not be for the general public, it's just for the volunteers, uh with people, you know, helping out, and some of the public, I don't know. Or any or so volunteers who are different names, um and that is sort of like a staging area for them. I know it was definitely used last year as well.
Okay, um so do, can any of you just describe why, you know, this is a fundraiser, obviously, what the benefits to the public are?
Uh well, sure, so it's, it's to that, the whole thing that Apple Harvest run in general is to benefit the Western River PTO, so um and I'm the treasurer of the uh Western River PTO, so we have various fundraising events about the year. This is our biggest one, um or has been today anyway. Um and we, it's a nonprofit, so we use the money to do appropriations for teachers at the schools, so anything from, you know, the new music teacher just came in and um she got like shelves in that, which are fairly expensive, like I think they were twenty-five hundred dollars, you know, three, three thousand dollars for these special shelves that she wanted to store some of the instruments. Um other times they, they get special whiteboards or lowly desks or different, different things like that, um. And, you know, as well as we can, we, we do uh teacher appreciation events and staff appreciation events, things like that, um. Where they'll have like lunch or things, you know, they have like an end of the year five or Q lunch, um trying to think of some.
So all, all of it is to benefit the F H school, Operation F H school?
Yeah, yeah, and for the teachers and their, are even, like they'll do the play for them, so we do, um we find that play and as you know, they have to buy scripts and sometimes run sets or whatever. Um and then the teachers will get a stipend, you know, some of the ones that help out with the director, the assistant directors and things like that. Another thing is we started to do a um stipend for some of the teachers that are helping with that garden up at the page. Just to water it over the summer and they've been able to have, um well, they grow a lot of stuff and they'll, they'll have um uh special dinner, like an apple harvest dinner at the school with some stuff that's grown. You know, some sort of locally, oh, grown stuff, yeah, exactly, and.
And with these, and since they have an abundance of tomatoes, they're making tomato sauce.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's another thing, so this year we're gonna do, we're gonna combine those two things and have it be this. Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's another thing. So this year we're gonna do, we're gonna combine those two things and have it be this Saturday night before. The race so that there's that traditional uh runner pasta dinner.
That's great.
I think is a great idea.
That sounds.
When is that being held? Is that in the?
That'll be at the page.
That period of page.
Yeah.
So what would the fee be that they're asking have waived?
Uh.
Hundred fifty.
So this would be for the annex. Um. For nonprofit organization. For so the fee schedule says uh there's. No fee for West Newbury organizations, but there's a footnote that says only if food is not present at the event. Uh, so the regular charge would be twenty five dollars an hour uh for the annex.
So I guess huh, so that's my concern would be. If they didn't clean up the place. So I would say take a fee and refund it if the place was left clean. That secures you by having to put town staff to clean.
Can we do that if that's not in the application?
Uh, I so so the the terms and conditions definitely require that the renters have, you know, uh leave everything as they found it. And you know, that doesn't mean that all doesn't always happen. Uh, for the most part, it's never in that step, but but especially a few years ago, there were there were times that didn't happen. So I don't know that town's ever done that and you you could do that if it was agreeable. Um. But I think in in practical terms, if if an organization rented a uh space and left it in a poor condition, um, you know.
It's not like the motion that you hope to uh with the fee, having assurances that it will be left as found.
Yeah, sir, and I'd love to say, I mean, I know you already said you don't think I have the fee, but the fee part isn't necessarily the problem. I I think we were just wanting to use the facility. So, I mean, we can pay the fee too if that's.
Honestly, if there's no cleanup, it's not. The the fee is really in the event. Yeah.
Um, but yeah, we'll make sure it's like.
Yeah, we'll definitely.
Great, that's.
Okay.
Great. That's a notion.
I love the notion.
All right, second. Rick.
Second.
Yeah. All right, on favor.
Bye.
Bye. Right, right. What's a great invention.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, and also the food is gonna be um probably like five notches up from the air.
Really?
Really, it's great.
I don't run anymore, but maybe I'll show up.
Should be good time.
I have a beer tent. But I came in late. We were talking about food.
Apple Harvest Run.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
All right, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, so just get the rest then to to Jim and great.
We'll follow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Um, all right. Hey, Mark.
Hi.
Um, so should we go back to department updates? That you guys want to do?
Say address with people here.
Yeah. No, um, you just hang out, Dana?
Yeah.
All right, nothing else to do.
You really don't like sort of like.
All right, yeah. So and we don't have anybody online for the other for the port players' application.
No.
Okay, all right. Well, that's um is Bob playing it coming?
Bob and Mark were playing and coming, so. Bob, I think so. Stay right now.
All right, so we'll just keep going until they show up. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so let's head back to see department updates and discussion. Uh, first one is on Sage Center upcoming events. We have a veterans breakfast. Um. Wait, that's not right. No, next week. It's Thursday. Ten AM, Sage Center. Uh, we'll see bone. Uh, Legend Learn Speaker Series the following week, um, with the Essex County Sheriff's Department. And then the regular weekly activities that they have. So um. Feel free to reach out to the council on aging for information on these. Anything else you want to add, Nick?
Uh, just a food drive. I I took that flyer out because it brought it over thirty mags, so it couldn't email. So that's posted separately, but that's uh that's an active food drive that they're they're running with their councilman aging.
Great. All right, item B under C is a memo from uh Butch Hills, the highway superintendent. Uh, this is in response to the questions about parking on Farm Lane. So we had asked him to go back and look at all the locations that were identified in the prior traffic. Rules. Um, any questions or comments from either of you on this?
No, nothing surprising. Obviously, we just have to now post a public notice. That's the intent. That's it.
Yeah, so any anything you want to modify that's.
Well, yeah, I'm wondering, you know, on Chestnut Street, Chestnut Hill, um. Do those need to continue? To be no parking, um, because I think the reason that that was no parking to begin with was. Um. Because of pressure from students. Um, but now there's adequate student parking, I think, and lots of. As far as I know, there's no effort to or no attempt to use that space. So. Um, I don't know if it makes a difference. I don't know if anybody would park there anyway if it wasn't students that didn't have parking in the parking lot, which isn't the case now. So.
Well, but I think Butch did check these areas out. It sounds like he's recommending that we continue with that. Uh, is that your understanding, Nick?
Uh, when he said no known issues, I I don't know if that, you know, he doesn't see a problem, but but I don't know if he's affirmative.
Yeah, I I I didn't I didn't read this. He's a endorsement.
Yeah.
As much as it's, you know, these are the rules and everything.
Yeah, that was basically the the direction that I I uh communicated to him was basically to reconcile what's on the page with what's in the field. Bring any discrepancies to our attention. So I didn't ask him, is do you recommend these? This is just, we just want to make sure that everything that was voted. Um, is in fact what's marked and if it's not to make us aware of that. So.
My question is how far down the rabbit hole do you want to go? We were trying to address just the Farm Lane component.
Right.
Because each one of these, you could have. Residents with questions and concerns who aren't even here.
Right.
So I would. I mean, other than he's got two that says need to install a sign, uh, on Main Street at Winfield and Main Street at Post Office. They've been previously accepted that way. The sign's just missing. So I would say Butch should do that and then if we could then post. However, we have to legally to say that that side.
I mean, it would just be worth, I I think it'd be worth having uh. Having Butch's opinion whether or not he thinks and and also um uh Mike Dwyer's opinion. Whether or not they think those need to be no parking areas. Because if there's really no pressure and if somebody, you know, on a on a rare basis. Uh, has a reason to park there, um, I don't see a reason for it to be posted. The the other thing is that. My recollection was from the meeting where the um people who lived on Farm Lane, you know, right right in the corner. That we were trying to address their deed and there was some discussion of having, you know, resident parking only or something like that for some. Section and do we want to address that now or because because right now. So it's Chief Dwyer and I met decided to make it no parking either side. Um, and I assume that that's for the entire length of Farm Lane. So that flies in the face of trying to accommodate the the homeowners there.
Well, I think we were trying to get everything organized and consistent before we then made a decision about Farm Lane.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to maybe at at the next agenda or whatever fits on a future agenda to get. That Farm Lane on as well as any, if there's any other. Uh, recommendations that either Butch or Chief Dwyer would offer uh to to differ from what's already approved.
Okay.
That way, if you do make a change, whether to clarify the Farm Lane or to change the Farm Lane or any other change, you can do, we can do that with a single.
Okay, yeah, because I think all the other stuff here was done to address specific problems that had occurred in the past and and and, you know, I every single one here. I understand why they're there and they make sense.
And you think they should continue?
Well, I I see no reason why they shouldn't because apparently there was a problem in the past. The conditions haven't changed. That would create that problem, so.
So. So would we suggest that he hold off on adding no parking signs until we?
Can we wait? I'd like to talk to Butch and the chief. I agree with Rick's comment to try and accommodate the residents on Farm Lane. If you could allow parking to the walk line of the second. Property on the right hand side, beastly side, that's.
But. But only resident park? I mean, how are you?
No, you can't control the residents.
Yeah, so then we're gonna have this, which is what.
Who's gonna park it?
The the construction vehicles. That's why this whole thing started because people were parking in spot that they usually park in.
What if you put a sign up that said resident parking, not resident parking only, just resident parking? That's.
Or construction.
That's somewhat ambiguous, but most people are gonna acknowledge that are not gonna park there. We just won't tell them.
Well, you've just said it on public.
That's fine, because the people watching this on public TV are not the people who would be the problem.
See, the problem originally was that the high school didn't have enough parking, so the overflow went out to Farm Lane.
That was the original problem.
That's now been revving.
Right, so this is a different problem than. When when those lots were being constructed, the the vehicles, like the contractors were parking in front of people's houses and they kind of.
They're done. It's just generally it'll be resident parking. So I think it'd be nice if that could be accommodated if the chief and the. And Bush don't have an issue with it. So I'd rather do that than keep the other side, especially no parking, because you can't park hard against the guard, but that's the issue.
Okay. So does it make sense to have Butch and Chief Dwyer to come in and talk about this? Or do you think we can do it through you, Angus?
Yeah.
I think it'd be good to have them here. I mean, we, I was gonna reach out to Dwyer anyway on the ambulance thing, because it's just, you know, we're coming up on the ninety days there, so I wanna. So I kind of had that in mind for maybe the second meeting, the twenty sixth meeting.
Yeah.
So if he's gonna be here anyway, I know Butch is always happy to come as long as he's not, you know, I I don't I don't think he's out that week, so.
Okay.
I think it'd be good to have them here.
I think it'd be more productive to just discuss it in one meeting.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, so item D, um, the board of assessors reevaluation. Um, so an email went out, a notice about this process, so I think we're just highlighting what residents can expect. Um, expect. So October will be the time that the results will be on return from the state and. Uh, board of assessors is planning on holding a public hearing in that two week period that residents can make comments. I'm not sure if that is outlined here. That was um. I talked to Rich Baker, who's the chair, about what their plan is.
Yeah, and I just to say, I I think, as you know, the reval happens every five years. It happened in twenty nineteen and at that time there were, um, you know, we're very different. Circumstances, but there were uh there were some issues and concerns that had been identified after the public comment period. And uh, at which point all people can then do is file an abatement, which is, you know, not ideal. So so I think that's what the. Motivation of the board of assessors and the assessing department is to get, you know. Get this information out as broadly as they can, as often as they can, so that once that uh commentary opens, people are aware, they can uh provide any comments or questions timely. And uh, yeah, because once those values are set, then it's then the abatement process is always available. So. Uh, there there's they have reached out to uh request something on tonight's agenda, just in the interest of helping to get the word out about this every five year. Uh, townwide effort.
Yeah.
Got a question. When they reval. My understanding was they were going to go to every house, go in the house and. Assess it. I know myself and I know at least one other person had no such program.
Go in their house?
That's what they were gonna do.
They they can't do that without people's consent.
Well, was there a sense out that they were gonna go house to house and?
Yeah.
I think that's how revaluation works. I mean, in the past, they've come by, they knock on the door. If you're not there, they leave you a hand card and says, please contact us and.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't know where.
I think they may have a gap in the process is my.
Okay.
Concern.
Well, yeah, and they can't.
Did they go to your house, Rick?
No, not not to the best of my knowledge. Um, uh, although there are some things missing. No, I was.
That was me. That was me.
Uh, no, that was, that was, I shouldn't have said that.
I guess the bottom line is this two weeks in October is the time to raise these kinds of concerns. So and I I think in the interest of maintaining a clear separation between this board and the board of assessors. We should speak as residents, not as board members. Um, what do you think, Chris? Would you agree with that? Or do you feel like the select board should weigh in as a board?
It was just a question. It's a concern if the process is.
No, I understand that, but I'm I'm just asking.
You mean in October?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'll go speak then as a resident.
Yeah. I mean, there have been people who I think I forwarded some of the emails to you, people asking us to do something, which is it's really not our goal.
I get that.
Independent, so I just want to reinforce.
And for all the residents, they have to understand that there's a clear and hard line. The select board cannot direct or request or require. Um, the assessors to do anything. They're completely separate because we've been getting those requests and it's.
Right.
Yeah, they're dashing. It's nothing we can do.
Yeah, no, they're they're a separate nonviolent support. Just to clarify or to make sure we haven't left a mess, a misimpression. Chris, you said something about them being able to go in into a house.
Mm hmm.
Um. I I don't think we should assume that's the case, that they can do. That they have the right to go into your house. I I I don't know that they can and they cannot, but I know in other states. That I've lived that they could specifically not.
You don't have to let them in.
Right, that was, that was it. Yeah, yeah. So they could go in, but only with permission. I don't know what the law is in Massachusetts as far as that's concerned. But I I don't want to leave it because, you know, this is a. An enduring record that people could look at. Why don't people want people to think that? You know, that we know that that's the case, unless you do, Chris.
I think the statement was made in the presentation that they would they would go to every.
And they used to. Five, six years ago, they did.
But but do they go to the house and look at it from the outside?
It's not gonna do it like when you went around and checked bathrooms, kitchens, square foot, everything.
Yeah.
Um. You have the right, I know legally, to tell them no, and then they can, what they generally do is assess that however they feel appropriate from the outside.
Also bathrooms.
Yeah, that's what would happen. Then you have an abatement right here.
Yeah.
I'll talk to the assessor about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Uh, next item, um, I asked one thing. I'm sorry. Um, on the agenda, it says that the Apple Harvest, Apple Harvest Run is October tenth, but it's October twentieth. I didn't know if that was.
Oh, my gosh.
I didn't know if that was a typo that you guys made or it.
What does it say?
On the Apple.
Well, one of the applications said the twentieth, so I didn't look at every single one. I didn't.
Definitely said the twentieth, but I don't know about the other one.
We'll be there on the twentieth.
It says the twentieth. Yeah, it looks like that was a typo on the agenda.
Just go to double check.
Well, perfect.
That's a nice thing.
You can hold it on two days now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, let's finish up the um board and committee updates and then are we ready for Mark?
I just asked, I just sent him a text. I haven't seen him reply, so give him a few more minutes and see what happens.
Okay, so the next item is CPC application updates. Uh, CPC met last night and there were two. Applications that will most likely be on the morning for the fall. Uh, the first is the um funding for the open space and recreation plan update. Uh, this is done every seven years and we have the funding application later in the agenda to. Offer our endorsement for. Um, there was also an eligibility application from the Mill Pond Committee to install trail markers um at Mill Pond. Site, um, and the committee deemed that that was eligible, so they're working on their funding application now for the next meeting. They just want to make you aware of that. So they're looking at having numbered um markers at each intersection to facilitate emergency response, you know, um, instead of just colors. Looking at it. So and then the idea is the open space committee would mirror the same system at open space properties throughout town, so we know consistent. Trail marking. That's it. Thanks for making where. Uh, let's go onto the action item. Um. Number A, the letter A, the request to accept a donation of five thousand dollars from the Colleen R. Lewis Trust into the G A R Memorial Library Gift Account. Uh, so this is required for gift accounts. The select board has to accept the money and then authorize the specific use of the funds. Any questions or concerns on that?
Yeah, what is the balance in their library gift account currently?
Uh, I have that at my office. I don't have it handy. Um. But I I can get that. It's under ten thousand dollars.
Okay, that's all I use.
Yeah.
Order made it to. Okay.
Yeah, the gift accounts are separate from there.
Totally separate from the the trust, which is under the Board of Trustees oversight. Um. So that was an initial question that we had when the check came in. Uh. Was would go to the trust or go to the gift account? And if it was addressed to the trust, it would have gone to the trustee. Up under the uh library tracker, but where it was addressed, it was not addressed to the trust of. Uh, and then the gift account is the the right way to handle it.
And this definition of general charitable purposes, that's broad enough to so that they're not gonna have to come back and.
Yeah, I I certainly think so, yeah.
So I'm I'm just curious, um, I. You know, very generous of of uh. Colleen R. Lewis to include the uh library in her in her life will testament. I don't know who she was. Does who who wants you? Does anybody know?
She used to live in town several years ago.
Yeah.
Lived down on Ash Street.
Okay.
But on the corner of Ash and Middle, I believe. I don't know where they moved to.
Yeah.
She don't care about.
Okay, well, it's very generous of her.
Make a motion to uh allow the G A R Memorial Library Gift Account to accept the generous uh gift from Colleen Lewis Trust of five thousand dollars. I have to state for the specific use, which is where I'm in.
Same same sentence. It's on any gentleman.
Jen, you're making work. Jen, you're making work. Uh, to authorize the use of the funds for the general, libraries' general charitable purposes.
All favor.
Thank you. And do we also need to? Give the chair.
Authorize the chair to assign?
Yeah, the, the, uh, yeah, Bank of America asked for a signer. And uh, I felt since the gift account under mass laws, under the select board's oversight, I, I thought the chair would be more appropriate than myself.
Authorized to, or move to authorize the chair to sign the acceptance of the.
Alright, uh, let's move on to action item F, which is a request for a partial waiver of the facility's use fee. In the end, in July twenty twenty-five, come forth later.
So I think that this is kind of arises from a kind of miscommunication of the, the change in the, the fee structure, because as you recall, in the. Former fee structure, the uh, nonprofits add, uh, could request a waiver for up to six, the first six uses within a calendar year. Uh, so I saw this come through and uh. I hadn't been in touch with the, you know, requester, um, so. So I tried to put together, I put together a memo just based on my understanding of what is going on. So if that's sufficient for you to understand the situation, take action, great. Uh, if you want more information, this could be, uh. Put on a future agenda, and they could come in and make their case directly.
So remind me, how did we update the policy?
So there's a, it went to a. Um, what is it, hourly, there, there's a, different tiers for commercial or private functions, has one rate. Nonprofit organizations has a lower rate, and then West Newbury Organizations has a third rate, which is generally free unless there's uh, food involved. Uh, so it's at an hourly rate, uh, you may remember, uh, with the former structure, I think there were half-day and full-day rates. And there were times that there were misalignment where someone was using a space for an hour, but the fee structure said like. Half a day, it, it just didn't make sense, so the board went to a uh. Per hour, and so for the. Uh, annex, it has a twenty-five dollar an hour rate for nonprofit organizations, so. Uh, with the two proposed uh, use of the annex for two-week theater camp next summer, um, you know. That, that's how I wrapped up the email and the memo.
I got a lot of questions, but I'm not sure how many I'm gonna bring them in. Can I throw it to you right now?
Well, we might as well talk about it. So they, did it fill out this, um, the application?
Uh, the facility use, yes, yes.
So we don't see that, is it just?
Correct, right, they've, they've, they've reserved the space. Uh, so, and you can see just with the email thread, um.
Okay, Chris.
And, and I don't think there's any urgency on it, so, cause it's obviously next July, it's their huge.
They, they're gonna take it for a two-week block.
Correct, yeah.
So what other, I know there's other activities that generally happen in there, so what other? Activities get squeezed out of that space that can't use it for that duration that are town-centered? I know there's a few, there's yoga, there's exercise, and then, and whatever else. And simply because they get the application in eleven months in advance, might not be fair to other organizations who are thinking. Monthly or biweekly on, on scheduling, I don't know. That'd be the first question, the second question would be. What are the costs to the town? I know we just spent a lot of money to put the carpeting in. And we're gonna have to put a new A C in there, I mean, it's gonna cost a hundred bucks a day to cool that place with A C. So to waive a fee on something at twenty-five bucks an hour, I just don't know. You know, you got bathrooms to get used with a septic system that is. And need attention at some point, um. The wear and tear in the building, so waiving a fee. I, I know they're nonprofit, but basically they're. Do they have a program that they're charging these people to?
Yes, yeah.
So I, I, a lot of questions that. I'm not real comfortable with it yet, so.
So is your question, are you concerned then, um, taking up the facility for two weeks or getting it?
It's both, first and foremost, I think any facility in town. Should be available to town organizations and residents first and foremost. We as taxpayers pay for them on an annual basis and. Uh, if it was sitting there foul. Uh, and somebody wanted to use it, and you could cover your costs, that's one thing, I don't suspect that is the case. So we displace town. Groups and organizations to other places that. I believe that they should have that privilege to.
Yeah, it's kind of, Park and Rec is kind of dealing with a similar thing, that, you know, groups rent the fields twelve months in, in advance. And then, you know, other groups that don't think about it, they're, they're just offline, so how, how are they?
Well, so actually, I met with Brian and I met with Doug Me, just, uh, I forget if it was last week or the week before, but in the last few weeks on that specific topic. And I shared with Doug, uh, as he's still, you know, fairly new in his role as chair, some of the concerns I've expressed to prior chairs of Park and Rec. On uh, the fee structure, both how it's, how it's set up, some of the ambiguity and the questions that result that. Uh, unfortunately, our, our staff person gets caught in the middle because she's. Send, sends invoices to user groups, they have questions for her because the policy that the commission voted a few years ago leaves a lot to be desired. Uh, it kind of puts her in the middle, cause, so we don't have a clear. The Park and Rec Commission didn't set a clear policy, so I met with Doug. Went through and provided him some detailed information, extra that, uh. Kind of affiliated group idea that we've talked about. And uh, they have that on their agenda for uh, next Wednesday, uh, so I'll be at that Park and Rec Commission meeting, um. And, and Doug was, and, and we've uh, talked about basically getting the current commission. Aware that there's a real problem with the current fee structure and the lack of clarity. Uh, and sometimes as applied is not really. Doesn't make sense, uh, and so we talked about basically getting the current commission kind of engaged in that. And then having a follow-up meeting later this fall where the. User groups, uh, the youth sports and so forth would be invited and, and part of, you know, a conversation about how to retool that before next season. One of the things that Doug suggested is, which is, it makes a ton of sense is. To actually have posted. Um, uh, like when will the spring fields, uh, spring ballfields be made available? Like what date, and to have a period of a couple of weeks or three weeks that is only available for local groups. Only after which it would become available for non-local, that kind of thing, so there's, I think there's a lot of work that can be done now, you know, and we have some. Very good people on the Park and Rec Commission now, uh, that I think can. Um, you know, make that better, so maybe in parallel, we can look at our, um. Facility use and try to get.
So is there any time restriction? Could somebody book the annex for two year, you know, two years out?
There's no time restriction, so, so that what happened uh, last season, I think it was a group that had. I forget the timing, but I think they had contacted Park and Rec. Something like ten months in advance for a huge amount of time, and so Caitlin Parker, um, could, could see that, like, that's a kind of a. That's above, above her, ju, you know, her job to make that call, so we referred that to, to commission. Uh, and it was, was taken up at a meeting, and they said they didn't wanna. Pre-book something, but there's nothing in the policy that says anything about that, that was just a judgment call, so. Uh, similar in this case, our policy doesn't say anything about it, so if someone. Reserves a space and puts a deposit, you know, unless, unless we wanna constrain that right now, someone could pre-book.
And so the, the use of the annex, who was that approved by, the facility use?
Uh, by Caitlin.
Yeah, okay, so it's not a, a committee or?
No, when, when I started, I was having to personally approve, and, and we do like a thousand of these a year. Like a thousand a year, and so I was spending way too much time on facility use requests when I had lots of other things to do, so. So, uh, back when Annie was here, the board adopted a policy in my recommendation that. Basically, if the uh, event is below certain thresholds. In terms of attendance, no alcohol, no food, certain things like that, uh, that Annie was actually delegated to. To do that on my behalf, and then she would bring something to me if there was a judgment call, but that allowed me to not have to be. Signing off on like every time the Boy Scouts were using a meeting, cause my first year, I was personally. Not a good use of time, so, so Caitlin, it had, she's got that same. Authority, so anything up to, um. Yeah, I forget the head count, but, um, but that would.
So I guess there's two issues then, we wanna waive the fee, and then a longer-term issue is the policy of about restricting it. You know, and I think those are two separate questions, right? I mean, we're only being asked to waive the fee here, there, applying into the current policy, which doesn't restrict it is.
Do you want to see, look back at, um. You know, past couple of years' history for that timeframe and see. Who had used it, what, what it had been used by, so that if there are town. Downtown entities that, that use it on a, obviously council on aging, you know, for, towards certain programs, maybe using it on a regular basis. And they are, not maybe, they are, um, and, and, um, so it'd be, it would be good to give a take on that. And, and if, if nothing else, reach out to those. Organizations, or those people, and, and, and let them know. Um, you know, of course, it's pretty hard to say ten months out what your program is gonna be for any particular period of time. At the same time, I, I am, you know, I guess, I, I personally feel somewhat sensitive to. Something like Port Players or any other organization that needs to do their planning, you know, and, uh. You know, do, we, we aren't obligated to accommodate them in any way, but do we feel, do they bring? You know, is there a net gain to the community for them offering their?
Well, that's my question, they're a new brick building organization, they have their own facility space. Why aren't they using a space in Newburywood? I mean, I'm not being.
Less expensive here.
Well, so there's another problem there.
I remember talking about this a few years ago, and the question was, how many West Newbury's, you know, people?
We had, we've, uh, we've the fee this. That previously, well, in the old policy, it was, there was a provision for, and it was spaced out as opposed to. Right, concentrated, it was like a, a night.
Yeah, not two.
No, they, they, they did, they did do the program the once before, they did it two weeks.
Two-week program?
Yeah.
I like Rick's suggestion, I think we should take a look at the calendar for last June, July. See which town organizations were on a regular basis utilizing that space, cause I know they have the exercise group and the yoga. If they can be accommodated within the schedule, that's one thing, and I think you should give them the first priority.
But we're not being asked to make that call, I mean, if we wanna make that call, we need to change the policy.
Well, then I would vote against waiving any fee, that makes it easier.
Is that your motion?
Uh, sure, we make a motion, we do not waive the fee on utilization. For the four. Players, whatever the group is called.
And, um, okay.
I.
I'll second that, let's, let's have further discussion.
Okay, yeah, I, I'd rather have more information, I mean, as I think has already said. There isn't a super hurry on making a decision here, and I also don't want it to just to be, you know, like a bad penny, keep coming back, but, um. It would be good to have a little bit more information about other uses that might. That there might be for the space, and just see, you know, try to understand how likely is there a conflict.
You see what I'm saying, that's a separate issue than whether we're gonna waive the fee.
Right, and that's why I would make the motion, I understand what you're saying, yeah. But I had, so. We're asked one question, you answer that question. Based on the information.
But I, but I, I think it's worth looking into the other parts of it, so I don't know. This, I don't wanna put this on Caitlin to, to research.
Well, I, I, I'll tell you that there, there was, I think you were on the board for some of this, very, in my worst year, eighteen months. This facility use policy went through a lot of churn and iteration. And, you know, I think what we arrived at when it was most recently modified was, you know, significantly, significantly better than.
Transition so far.
But it's not perfect, and there are questions, and there are things about, you know, advanced usage, I, I think it would benefit from that now that we have. You know, actually a full-time staff person who's administering all this, which we never had until, you know, a year ago. Uh, and he's fair, who's a, you know, got a business degree, that's right, extremely. Confident at, uh, at this stuff, I think, I think it would benefit from like. A cold read and kind of other, you know, some ambiguities that she, cause she's the one who's. Who's interfacing with the user groups, and so there's questions when they come up, that I think it would benefit, I don't think it should be. I don't think it needs to hold up a. Decision on the, the waiver request, I, I totally agree, they're the two very different things, but I think, you know, putting this policy. Uh, through, you know, some screening with current staff who are, you know, extremely capable, I think is, is gonna be worthwhile.
I mean, if the council on aging knew. That they would be precluded from using this space for two weeks next year, if they were approved, they would schedule off for the next five years. On every Monday from eight to noon, or whatever they need. You know, I, I think it's gonna catch a lot of people by surprise. And whereas it's, like I say, town-owned property and benefiting residents, and when I was on school committee, we had the same user. The issue, there was groups coming in, using the tennis courts and the ball fields, running a business and being charged almost nothing, and so we. Worked a policy for the benefit of the district, and it was the hottest topic. When I was on school, people get so hot about the fees on the spaces, it's insane, so when you start going down that path, good luck, I'll be. I'll be watching from the sideline.
Alright, so we have a motion to deny the fee waiver request, um. Do you, you feel like you wanna defer that vote, Rick?
Um. I, 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 yeah, I, I, I would, I guess, I guess, I don't know, I don't know enough about the organization to know. I mean, they do charge a fee to participate, so there, they do have funds available, and I don't know how. Marginal the operation is, and.
And this is a partial waiver, it's not a complete. Right, so you know.
Right, right, exactly, yeah.
Why would you wanna waive it? The town, let's assume, I'm picking a number, it costs a hundred dollars a day. To cool out with an air conditioner, it's probably not.
Uh, it's probably not that much.
Okay, you got that, you got wear and tear in the septic, you got. All kinds of, we just put in the carpeting, and the, the value of that, even the fee alone doesn't cover that, so why? Why, if you vote for this. If you don't vote for this, then you're gonna push out the council on aging with their exercise and the yoga group and any other group who might wanna use it there. To basically either break even or lose money, I, I think it's a.
Did we, did we put this last year in the waiver?
Uh, I don't, I don't recall.
Okay. Alright. Um, I, I think we should vote, I mean, you can abstain if you want, I, I do think they're separate issues, so.
There, there, I agree that there's separate issues, but. I think my. My thoughts will be tempered by one. One will be tempered by the other.
Alright, all in favor? All opposed?
I will abstain.
So does the board have a role in revising the policy, the facilities use?
Yes, the, uh, yeah, under the. Town Manager Act, basically, I'm charged with overseeing the rental and, uh, you know, so forth of town. Facilities, subject to the policy direction of the board, so, so the board adopts the policy, me and the staff, then I implement the policy that you adopt.
I think it'd be helpful if, if we could coordinate to have Caitlin come in and just informally talk first.
I think that'd be great, yeah, I think, I think it'd be great.
Okay. Uh, are we waiting for Mark?
No.
Okay, alright, let's move ahead to, uh, to general discussion items, I, item D, a memo from the Board of Water Commissioners. This is about the planned green belt and mass E C R purchase of. The land adjacent to the well field that the town leases and, and the, the. Can you pull up the memo?
Yeah, just trying to.
You said the town leases?
The town.
We have a restriction?
Yeah, yeah, we have an easement, yeah.
Scroll bar is not appearing on my. I'm just gonna go back to the agenda and then. Yeah, there's no scroll bar on the right of that page, it's weird.
And what page is that, so I can?
Page eighty.
Thank you. Alright, any, um, questions or comments on the memo, we have. Two members at the water commissioner and water superintendent, so they can answer it, but anything you wanna talk about first?
My comment, Vegas Jack put it together, so if you'd like to. Tell us about it, I mean, I agree generally with what he says, I just don't know how it all works.
Um, well, do you have anything additional to add, Jack, and what's in the memo?
No, I don't have anything additional to add, um. I hope that the, the memo expresses our deepest concern with this. With this town asset and, and the, and the critical importance of this resource. And we did learn on August fifteenth that we have. Uh, at the most a hundred and twenty days, so if, if, if it started ticking then, we have ninety-nine days.
Uh, at the most a hundred and twenty days, so if, if, if it started ticking then, we have ninety-nine days now to, um. Uh, in this hundred and twenty day period that you chose not to waive for approval and, um. And there are a number of things that I think are outlined here that we can take action on as a. As a community, and, and one would be just seeing exactly what the. Um, uh, authority of that permanent easement is. In, in, um. Item one, uh, the permanent easement, and I'm not a lawyer, but, but I, I'm just quoting. No activity shall be permitted that interferes with the use. And operation of the existing or future water facility or uses, and I believe the board of water commissioners feels that. You know, moving the fence back, putting a parking lot in, um, uh, is a threat to. Uh, that asset, that natural resource, and, um, you know, it would be nice to have council opinion. As to whether or not it's the interpretation of the water department or the town. To determine what interferes with the use and operation of the existing and future. Uh, water facilities uses that fence. On Main Street on one thirteen was placed there originally as part of the easement. For reason for both security and resource protection, so. The idea that the, the, the easement is still in place, but the green belt will move the, the, the gate back. Um, that, that, um, that's their interpretation. That it won't interfere with the current and future use and protection of that resource, so. I, I really think that, you know, that our due diligence as a town. Is to find out, you know, what protection that permanent easement with its original intent. Uh, affords our ability to decide whether or not this parking lot there and whether or not the fence moves.
Yeah, I think one thing I would point out in the, in the language you quoted in the first amendment to the easement, it restricts. That area to the current developed facilities and twenty feet from them, so I, I believe the fence is outside of what is.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate.
Yeah.
That interpretation, but I'm not quite sure I agree with you, and I, I think that, you know, um. I, I, I think, I, I think someone should look at it very closely with.
Fifteen acre block.
It did mention. I mean, I, it, it, there, there's other, potentially other conflicting language, so really.
Amendments or in the original?
In the origin, yeah, the original does mention fifteen acres that's outlined.
Yeah.
In the plan that DCR submitted.
Yeah.
And, and not just the, the, there's only one hundred foot.
Okay, yeah, I think amendments would supersede that though, right?
Well, uh, you know, to, to the extent that the amendments are, are in effect, you know, I think that would be. Something again for town council to provide an opinion.
You can ask a question?
Yeah.
Is this Green Belt or DCR? They were here together the previous meeting. Who's driving this?
Green Belt is purchasing it and DCR is buying the CR, is that correct?
That's right, Green Belt has been here for many, many projects. If they understand. How seriously the water department and the town take this, can they be convinced to back off of? Still acquired, but put the protections on it so that the water supply is protected, don't put the parking and. Let them come in off of, uh, Middle Street on the other side. There's no need to have to do this. I don't see it, it. It just makes no sense. It's, it, Mark, as he said, most valuable resource you have in town, because. Messed up, contaminated or whatever, I, I just don't understand why they wouldn't.
Yes, there is, well, you know, Reebel said is that the reason, or at least what I, what I recall him saying, um, was that. Part of the reason why they want to do that in this particular place is visibility, because they have this, yeah, I, I know, I'm, I'm not agreeing with it. It's, you know, they, they, they have this footprint. In West Newbury, you know, with, with a number of different properties that they either own outright, outright, or have CRs on, or, you know, whatever the. Relationship is with a particular piece of land. Um, and they feel they don't have enough visibility, and they thought that this was their way of gaining more visibility. That was the way I interpreted what we, part of what we.
Well, they did say that, so like.
Yeah, yeah.
Any publicity is good publicity, but this would be bad, but I just think it's so.
Yeah.
Counterintuitive to what Green Belt should be wanting to do, I mean. They should want to accommodate, protect our water supply and not.
So, so can I ask a question, I guess, of the Board of Water Commissioners, so like, um, or somebody. An, an individual with the Board of Water Commissioners, because I don't know if you're convened as a, as a, like, board right now, but, um, uh. Do you, if, if there was access. From Middle Street, um, you know, so they own a property that's, um, you know, two hundred yards, three hundred yards at the most. Uh, from the Middle Street Bridge, you know, from, there's, there's the, the roadway that goes in. Uh, I call it the roadway, it's, you know, sort of a access route, um. There's a gate there, um, you know, on Middle Street going, you know, for going, preventing you from going northbound along the reservoir. So if there was. Assumed to be access through there, and it looped up around, can you say, see a way that? Um, trail access could loop up around. The well field property without presenting. A risk and, 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 and not have, not have parking on Main Street, but just have access for people to get through.
There is a.
Yes, yeah. But it's not really currently official or acknowledged, I don't think.
It's not official, but it's.
It's not official, which is.
Yeah.
Well, no, and, and I've used it years, I haven't been out there for years, but I know that, but, but, but the problem is that, uh, you know, I. I, I'm not sure at this point if it's. If it's legal, um, you know, are you supposed to be going through there or not, is so, and.
It's owned by the Society of St. John.
Yeah.
So.
So, so my point is, if Green Belt had the land and there was now a trail that went through there. You know, a designated trail, um, would there be a problem?
But the existing easement has a mapped trail.
With trails, yeah. I mean, I think we have to, you know, it's the four hundred foot radius that, that, you know, you could have a development right next to that, so.
Well, I disagree, I mean.
Well, you can.
I, I, I disagree i- in the sense that the permanent easement identified the fifteen. Whatever acres as, as land that was, you know, um. Uh, used for existing and future water facilities, and security is part of those facilities. So, that, that four hundred foot then came perhaps after in some. In, in some subsequent addition of, of an easement that, that, you know, I, I think. There has been some question about, about the legitimacy of that amended easement, let's, let's get this where away, you know?
What's the question about legitimacy?
I thought it was a, a second, uh, amendment that wasn't. It wasn't a property registered or something.
It wasn't, it wasn't reported.
Yeah, it wasn't reported, so, um, you know, the, the. If for nothing less than the, the spirit of intent of St. John's to provide, of St. John to provide this land. And the, and the integrity of, of the water department to, to, to. To, to be able to say what security and, uh, and, and resource protection means, I, there are many. Water supplies that, uh, in, in municipalities that manage water supplies that purchase land. Um, well beyond any boundary given by mass D E P, just because of resource protection.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Uh, and this is no different here.
Yeah, it's just that it's not, it's not our land, I mean, maybe your conversation needs to be with Green Belt, I mean, if you have specific concerns about the fence.
That's why I think you need to have a conversation with Green Belt.
Yeah, I just, this, this deal is like in the works with DCR and Reebel, and I mean, I, I personally. I'm fine with getting our attorneys to look at the language, but I, I don't know that we can interfere with this deal.
Or if Green Bell came to us in advance and said, this is what I'm really flummoxed by, if they want to work in partnership with the town. This is really not a way to accomplish that.
Well, so I guess their, their position is that they weren't asking the town for any money, you know, so.
Well, if an organization such as Green Belt can't understand the critical issue of a water supply.
Mm hmm.
That really is unbelievable, it's all, you know.
Yeah, I, they don't believe they're impacted, I think that's, I, I'm not defending them, I'm just telling you that's.
That's naive on their part, if, if they actually believe that, so I, I think there's a courtesy there that they should have.
We have, there are people that park right on the rest.
You can drive on the rest of the road, I get on the other side, but we've got an opportunity to protect something. Once you don't have the protections, it's difficult to get them back.
So, I mean, one of the points that this panel raises is, you know, can we purchase the land instead of Green Bell? And that's a conversation that we have with Society of St. John's, I mean, you know, it's not up to the select board, um.
Well, Reebel is intent on purchasing, they made it pretty clear, as was the state, they wouldn't reveal the purchase price.
Right.
I mean, ideally, if they'd accounted west months ago, we could have said, can we join in with you? We'll take this component, protect the water, you can take the rest, but that's.
Right now, we have really no, no say in it because we're not doling up any money.
Well, we could ask Reebel to be cooperative.
Well, you said you have no say. But it would be appropriate for town council to say whether or not we have no say. We have a permanent easement and the protection of that is one thing.
Mm hmm.
And the opportunity, uh, for the, for the towns to purchase this land under this. If it's a purchase and sale agreement or whatever it is, I don't think anyone has actually seen that document.
Mm hmm.
It, it's, it's kind of a gray area.
It's a purchase and sale agreement, we just.
Have we seen it? Do we, do we see what it says? I mean, it would be, it would be appropriate to see. I'll back up a little bit. I, I think from a, from a procedural perspective, it would be appropriate to find out if the. Town was ever offered this land. Uh, in the past and, and in what context.
But what would that, what would that accomplish? I mean, it would be.
It would be one thing to say we were never offered it, it would be another thing to say we were offered it and we chose not to pursue it for some reason. I mean, having never been offered it, I, I believe there's, there's a, uh. A case for, um, advocating for town rule in this case, in, in whatever manner that is. And could, and, and one of the, one of the, the memo items was to contact Senator Tar and Representative Ramos. And, and have them advocate, um, for the town. Uh, because we feel, you know, that we're being, uh, have no choice with the state, DCR, and so our elected officials may. Have an opportunity to interfere with that, in, intervene with that state agency, and so if there is an opportunity, I, I mean. It does seem that this would be an obvious community preservation. Asset to protect, and so perhaps we would have the funds. To pursue that if we were ever given the opportunity, and if we weren't given the opportunity, that, that raises a lot of question marks, why were we not? Given that opportunity, uh, because, you know, what, what, what greater asset, as many people have said. Does the town have? Than their water supply, and why is this being taken from us in, in the view of the, the authority that protects? The water supply, feel that, that, that asset is being compromised in the, in this process that has gone up. I think that's, that, that's certainly, um, that's certainly something that our legislators. Uh, would either choose to or not choose to, uh, uh, represent us, you know, in, to D, DCR.
Yeah, so I, I think as the purchaser, Green Bell would be the one that they would want to interact with, I mean, DCR is just purchasing a CR. So.
Well, well, that may very well be, yeah, but, but a- at some point, some cloud getting to the bottom of this, I think, is warranted. It, it's, it's extremely important to the interests of the current and future, um. Um. The, the, the current and, and, and future growth of the town. Right, if we lose that resource. We know how precious. You know, the volumes of water that we have, and we, we ask, we absolutely know. That is, we have to, right now, we have to purchase water to provide for the town. If, if this thing that we have some control over is compromised, that just puts us two steps back.
So the, the, the fundamental concern is comp- compromising the quality of that water source, not preventing from further development or anything like that.
Resource protection, even, even if there was a housing development going there, we still have an opportunity to kind of a, a, assert our. At, at, at a minimum, our opinion on protecting the resource, and, um.
Because as far as we, that, that name was never for sale. And, you know, if a housing development was going to be get it. That'd still be your argument that, you know, can we get it somehow?
Right, well, the second amendment to the easement was specifically for development, so obviously St. John's was considering that.
Right, and, and, and the process is, there's an opportunity to re, to plan review, and, and, and we're getting, yeah. Uh, and, and so another thing would be, and we could arrange this, is to just, um. Touch base with Mass D E P on this so that everyone is similarly informed. On what their concerns are.
Yeah.
Um, in, in this, you know, time critical period of time.
Mark, you had, you had reached out to the E P.
I talked to him.
Yeah, yeah, and, um. He said, he said that he didn't think that the silver bullet group because it's protected by Mass D E P. But we needed to get it all together. We haven't done that with him yet because we wanted to kind of get him here.
But, but I think you and I spoke, I think after, after you talked to him and, um. Was he clear that the, um, proposed sale was of the property, not, not, not the easement?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think, yeah, we gotta, we gotta get complete information, um, to him and.
Were you going to provide a copy of the easement to him? I think that's what you had said after you spoke, just to make sure he's clear.
He actually sent me the easement, said he had it.
Okay.
So he had one, he had, he didn't have the one, the second one that hasn't been filed yet.
Okay.
He had the original.
Did he have the first amendment and the original easement?
Um, he had the one that's twenty-five years old and like that.
Alright, so perhaps he doesn't have the first amendment.
It's, it's recorded, I don't know, he could have gotten it from the registry, but, but yeah, I mean, I'd be very happy, would like to be part of a call.
We, I talked to him last week when you were on vacation, I never followed up with y'all, so if you want, I can call him tomorrow, I'm gonna set up an appointment, you know, a Zoom or something next week. So that we can find out what.
That'd be great, yeah.
So that's, that's one piece of it. I think it's also worthwhile to just sit down with Green Bell, if you have specific concerns, it seemed like Vanessa was willing to. Consider, you know, your, your, um. Opinion on the fence and parking area, I don't know how to facilitate that anyways, if that's.
Well, it's, you know, it's really, it's, it's very unfortunate, and we acknowledged last meeting, how, how this has been handled, because, um. They really, you know, my advice when I got the call from Vanessa was to contact Mark to set up a meeting. And then the next thing you know, they're on site and.
Yeah, I, I stopped.
And so.
I'll do.
And, and then when I tried to get a meeting set up with her, she said, oh, I'm on vacation most of August, it was like into September, and by that point, everything just. Had gone haywire, so, uh, and I, you know, I talked to her since then, I made very clear our critique of. But it doesn't sound like they've, yeah, I think there's got to be a meeting with, with Green Bell, uh, I think that they will. Drop, so I don't want to speak for them, but I do think they will drop some of.
That's, that was my question, speaking of.
But it's not.
Yeah, so what, what group is the appropriate, I mean, having her come to a select for me, I'm not sure that's.
I don't think so, no, my advice was that, you know, a sit-down meeting with, you know, with daytime meeting with Mark and. Member of his board or with the full board, I mean, I think that would be totally appropriate and, and helpful.
I talked to Jimmy, said, said up a little meeting, so anyway, you know, if you, if you want to drop on or something like that, he's.
Yeah, I think getting Green Bell to, to, uh.
So these are two separate meetings.
Yeah, two separate meetings, yeah, right.
I think if, um, a, a good outcome for this would be, um. If, if they, if they're, the, the permanent easement could have new language. That would permanently exclude a parking lot, uh, but maintain a trail, i- if that's. Ultimately what happens if Green Bell does ultimately take control of the property and includes the permanent easement. So there might be, you know, something formally registered to that effect.
So, are, are you talking, is your issue with access or, I mean, the parking lot is going to be gravel probably, right, like the one on.
Good, yeah.
But the parking lot, the parking lot is originally being proposed to be outside of I shot of one thirteen, so it's.
So I'm asking.
There are all sorts of.
The impact of the parking lot or the access that that provides?
Well, no. So, you know.
But I just think it should be clear so that if there's a way, a workaround for Green Bell, they can, you know.
Right, and, and Chris, you know, uh, if anyone has seen the Middle Street parking lot, and I go by there quite frequently. Uh, it's, it's a very ample parking lot and there are. Very rarely cars parked there, so if there is a, i- if it's a, it's a matter of functionality. Which probably should be the ultimate objective.
Yeah.
Then that parking lot is probably sufficient when you compare the miles of trails and other sized parking lots for other similar. Trail networks. If it's a matter of visibility, well, that, you know, that.
That's not the thing you want to make visible.
That doesn't add up.
Right, so, so Oscar. Was there, was there a reference to if they're using DCR money or if DCR was part of the deal that DCR was requiring? Something specific in terms of public access, and I, I don't recall how that was defined, but I, I think that, that. Requirement may be partly. Requirement may be partly, or that goal of Greenbelt's may be partly driven also by. DCR requirements. I'm, I'm not sure, but I.
Oh, that's the requirement. Has he checked with the police department to find out if they can have? Talked to Chief Dwyer and he was concerned, I mean, we actually have to sneak out a lot of time to just take a right, go to Newburyport, turn around. He's concerned about traffic getting out into the fifty-five mile an hour or sixty mile an hour zone there, but other people.
Well, well, that's interesting thing is they probably have to go to MassDOT in order to get permission. Or, I mean, you, you, obviously you already have access there. I don't, I don't know how that, how that's worked. I, I, I don't know what, what specifically is allowed there by MassDOT, but I mean, they essentially are the ones who give you, uh, you know, permission to, to put access onto a highway.
It, 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 it's all a matter of, of ironing out, but I mean, if it. If it were a, a matter of who's gonna permit a parking lot, we would, I, we'd go back to, this is a secure access. Right now, for the function of the existing facility in the current and foreseeable future. And moving the secure access in a compromised position just wouldn't fly. Based on, I'm speaking for the board, but based on the board. So, and, and that would go back to either the permanent easement or an interpretation of the intent of subsequent easements. You know, so that's why I think one thing would be if town council said, you know. Ultimate paramount importance is, is, is the intent of the permanent easement. Then a, a parking facility for one thirteen should be nipped in the bud. You know, and, and DCR's access could be signage, you know, it's, it might be a compromise for them. But you, uh, lots of interpretations could rationalize that Greenbelt, which has the annex and the property. Already has parking facility that provides the access. Those are, it, it would be good to sit down with Greenbelt to see. If they're willing to create language in the permanent easement to provide our protections and their access.
The other thing too is in that fifteen acre area, if. The well field fails and you need to move it four hundred feet forward, we're not just confined to that four hundred foot radius. We have a little bit of flexibility.
Yeah.
You know, St. John.
Yeah, the tubular well fields have finite lives and, um.
Why, why is that? I know, I, I heard you say that before, why is that?
Um.
Mostly it's the streams on the.
Examination of the, of the, the media, whether it's part of the tubular field itself or the, the, the natural.
And, and, and within the same space, you can't put a new hole, hole in with new media and.
Well, you can't.
I, I mean, I don't wanna get into well design, but I'm just curious, when you say something and I don't understand it, I wanna understand why, that's a limitation.
So that could be hard with, you know, if it's starting to fail, it's probably not gonna shut off at night. You're probably gonna say, okay, it's failing. We wanna try to search for some more spots we can put it in there, keep it running as long as you can so that you can get it up and running. That's what you're, so I mean, we, we're looking, we still need a little flexibility, that's all. And I don't know what, if they have conservation restrictions, how hard is it to us to go to Greenbelt and say, hey, we need to move down six hundred feet. It's gonna be moved, what are they gonna say? You know, I know.
Right near your parking lot.
Right, but I mean, if something happens, we're fighting for this because, you know, Newburyport got the rest of our water, we don't wanna lose this, so.
So what are the, the implications of making the fence in? It's not.
So we, even with the fence there, we still have problems with people backing in there and dumping their trash. Somebody does that with a chemical. Gas tank, something like that, it would be detrimental to the, to the, to the.
It would be detrimental where the fence is now, if they put twenty feet, it's not gonna be that much difference.
Oh, who would make a difference?
But, but, but most people drive by and they go, there's a gate there, I'm not gonna pull in. If we leave the gates open. Or it's moved back, it gives them the room to say, I can pull in there, I'll pull into the parking lot, back in, nobody's looking, I'm, I'll leave this gate.
So it seems like the Greenbelt conversation needs to happen with you guys, cause I think if you can work out something. I, I don't think we can stop the purchase. I mean, I appreciate the question about did we ever have the opportunity, but I feel like it's too far gone for that. Unless you are able to, you know, in your dialogue with Greenbelt, figure out a workaround.
Well, we would like to know if there was ever an opportunity by the, by, and I don't know, I mean, we could speak to St. John, we could speak to whoever. But we're asking in a collaborative manner, if, if the board was ever.
Well, I, I, no, 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 we, I don't think anybody here has ever had. Had a conversation where there was an op, where we thought there was an opportunity for the town.
We would have been more than enthusiastic.
So, 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 but you know, Reebelt is a land trust and they aggressively pursue, um, acquisition or. One way or another preservation of land. You know, we're a town government and we focus on trying to run a town government and, oh, by the way, we also, where we can protect land and, and do other stuff. But, you know, the, the primary mission here isn't to go out searching for land to buy in West Newbury. Yeah, and that is Greenbelt's primary goal, not just West Newbury, but, so that's why they came up with a deal and we didn't. You know?
Um, okay, so, fair enough.
So I think, uh, to address number one, I think it's reasonable to have council review the easements. Determine whether that second one was viable or not, because it wasn't required. I think we have preliminary feedback on that, but it'd be good to have a complete opinion.
Yeah.
Um.
Could it be an opportunity for us to have a conversation with town council too, so they have a sense of our?
I think we have your memo. I mean, what we try to do when we engage town council is give them all the information, written information. And to, in order to limit the time. I mean, they're getting like three hundred bucks a hour, so we don't wanna have a meeting and, you know, all of that.
I appreciate that, but for the proposed I M A, town council came and spoke to us, I don't think there's anything more important than this. So.
I, I feel like they're not, well, we can discuss that, I guess. Um. This, this is a discussion item, it's not an action item or anything, so I don't know that we're ready to make a decision tonight. But, but the way I see it and from what I've heard, you know, there's an opportunity for town council review. The second issue, um. If you wanna follow up with St. John and see if they did offer it, I, we're not aware of anything, so I don't know that we wanna invest time trying to figure that out.
I think you could have a legal problem if you stepped in between the deal with Greenbelt and pushed that house. Very careful on that.
It sounds like we're talking about setting up a meeting with the D E P. You can talk about that, and then I think if you can talk to Greenbelt and have them come in and, and share your concerns and see if. If you can work something out, or if you can't work something out, then maybe that's the time to get state people involved. You know, if you work something out with D E P, it doesn't make sense to get Senator Tar and Ramos engaged and.
Or if you work something out with, with Greenbelt, or if we're able to, you know, come up with some reasonable agreement with, with Greenbelt.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think, uh, those individuals are, are at our disposal to kind of level the playing field, so.
I just wanna make sure.
Ninety-nine days or less, you know, it probably is not a bad idea to put things on their radar.
Mm-hmm. Just wanna make sure we have a complete and accurate picture, you know, before we do that.
And I think the, one other open question I think is the, the DCR and what are the public access requirements that they, that were mentioned at the meeting? We don't have anything, um, you know, we haven't provided anything in that, so I think a conversation, and I think Greenbelt can share that information. Uh, but they haven't.
Yeah, so. Let us know. I mean, I don't know that we've at all attended, but if we're able to, I think it would be helpful for us to just hear firsthand, we have to say.
Alright. We'll bring this up at our, well, our board meeting next week, yeah.
And then you're gonna work on scheduling the D E P.
We'll work on schedule on D E P.
Yeah, okay.
Um.
I think that sounds good, and then.
This is your two P M Tuesday board meeting next week.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, we, we'd be interested in any opportunity to, um. To e- express our concerns to town council. Because I think a lot of things may fall between the cracks and the metal, so there, there might be value in that.
So could you, if, I mean, what we typically do is write an email with enumerated concerns for them to address. So if you feel like there's anything that's not in this, if you can provide that to Angus, I think that'd be helpful. Specifically, you know, question one. You know, what is the second easement amendment valid? Question number two. You know, I don't think they need the context and all of that, they just need to know the legal question they're being asked to address.
Well. Uh, that's fine. I mean, it seems a little cumbersome in a half an hour Zoom, you could get a lot of things accomplished that. That perhaps, um, might get misinterpreted by.
They're lawyers, I mean.
Oh, I know the lawyers. I know the lawyers too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll, we'll take up the legal question, um.
Yeah, we, we would, I mean, we, we can, we could discuss at the board level whether or not we would pick up that added cost.
Yeah, it's not, it's not only the money, it's that we have a lot of legal stuff going on right now and we're very careful about, you know. Not drowning them and stuff. We have immediate things that need attention, so we don't wanna add one more thing with a, a meeting and, and all of that, so. If there's a way to package it up neatly that somebody on their staff can take it and, and address it, that would be preferable. That's my opinion, but I guess you wanna weigh in and step out. I mean, we wanna be consistent too with how we handle other boards.
I mean, that's generally, you know, how we handle it, we, you know, and certainly we, we have conversations with council. Uh, but generally, we, we set out the questions initially, um, and they, they provide written responses and. If there's need for discussion, we, we do that, uh, but, but yeah, we always try to frame the question, give them all the background. Allow them to make, you know, best use of their time, and I think that's part of why they're, you know, so responsive, because I think we, we give them things that are. Uh, you know, we put in the time upfront, and so I think that, you know, the memo, uh, that we received is good. I, I think if, if there is anything missing from that. This sort of clarification, um, but certainly.
Well, this is a, this is a water specialty, water resource issue, and frankly, I, I don't think it's any more important. Than, than the I M A, and we, we have the, the benefit of speaking to that person for an hour in our meeting. Uh, and so I, I just think, I think it just makes common sense, we have the same opportunity.
We said that, was that, is that special, yeah, is there, is there a special counsel for?
Special counsel, right.
Who's there specifically for that purpose.
And I think this is the same sort of thing. I, I really don't see a difference.
I, I do see difference, but, but anyway, why don't we, why don't we start with that? If we get the response from council and you still have questions, maybe then we set up a meeting. I don't know, let's at least follow our standard approach. Means that.
Okay, I just, I just urge the board to, to do this in a timely manner.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Ninety-eight days?
Counting.
We will ninety-nine today.
No, we're gonna do it a day early.
Alright, anything else? Chris, did you have anything else in this? Or, or you're good?
I'll be it.
Okay, alright, thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a nice night, everybody.
Alright, so let's go back to action items. We have a request from. Partner Fish and Game with a letter of support regarding the intent to purchase the property on Middle Street.
Fifty-one?
Okay.
If I'm correct in this, I look there on my fifty top books.
Yeah, well, it's his date.
Yes.
So.
And they're keeping the frontage on, on Middle Street.
Right, so, yeah. Technically, the Ash Street section.
Right.
So I guess I'm confused, thirty acres is an entire parcel?
No, it was like forty, I, I looked on, uh, my maps and I think it was forty something, I don't remember what, but I may even still have that up. There's something, this came in last, last week, so I think if there's any question, I think let's. You know, talk about it tonight, but maybe continue it, cause I, this, this kind of was the first, you know, we got it on August twenty-eighth. Um, so I don't think it's something we need to, you know, unless, unless it's clear and you're comfortable.
Yeah, it's not clear to me what, what parcel we're talking about. I thought, I assumed it was the fourteen acres, that's part of the.
Well, I can check, I mean.
So what, what part of that?
The red.
The green.
Well, well, actually, so Wendy, so if you can see that image there and then cut a picture of line cutting here.
Yeah.
So they're retaining the frontage on Ash Street, uh, Middle Street and, and this area here, so they're retaining.
So thi- this is nothing to do with Evergreen Farm?
No, it just happens to do with but.
In a but's Evergreen.
So, okay, so.
Yeah.
This map help, I don't like it.
Not, I can see it. I'm just not clear on like, you know, where this fell from, is this something that they've been working on for a while or?
Presumably, sounds like they probably, I mean, if they're at this point, then they probably have it, but, yeah.
And so they're purchasing it from?
And we could, we could invite them in to, to present to the board, I think that would be helpful. Sure, uh, yeah, they could participate remotely, but, but, uh.
Only curiosity I wanna mention on this plan is when the comprehensive plan was done in nineteen ninety-nine. This entire parcel, the Cook parcel, was the one that they said the town should acquire and use it for. School, elementary school at the time, because you had access on Middle and Ash. Ash Street has since had four houses built, which were Tom Cook's, they cut out lots. Um. And I think, you know, we obviously acquired the Dunn property, which would be a great site for a school too, but. So that, that vision of the school would be pretty well excluded at this point if, if that goes.
Right.
Which it pretty much is once they sold those lots on Ash anyways, but.
Well, the other thing is that, I mean. You go a quarter mile southeast on Ash and you have an issue with the road. So, being at that, I, I, I don't see being at that point on Ash as necessarily being a great place to be putting a school.
They probably would have gone in off Middle with access via Ash where the houses are. Um, and I think there's three houses down on Ash, which would have kids, but that's.
Yeah.
Another issue.
So where it says the. Current property owner is retaining frontage, that's not reflected in this map?
On Middle, but Cook's house retains it.
So, so Jim's got, I'll, I'll pull it up on my map, because there's a, there's a difference between what's showing on my map as the parcel boundaries and what they're showing. Uh, as.
But it's because they cut off a bunch.
Exactly, exactly, so.
And that up front, he's got a bunch of different parcels that comprise his.
Yeah, so you can see the difference between this.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, and thi- this. Uh, yeah, and this is, I think, what, where, where, you, you see this part.
Yeah, 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 see, yeah, look at that triangle there, or that, that angle, and use that as a reference point.
And so it's that small piece of.
So, so you can see, yeah, it's, you know, from here up, it's cut off and retained.
Yeah, okay.
It's actually bigger, cause he also owns the other parcels to the west.
Right, right, there, there was two other building lots there, I think, and, and there is exist, an existing house on the parcel that's being retained. You know, this, this big parcel, you know, the whole thing that's shown there, there's actually a house on that currently. So they're cutting in off the, the, the excess land essentially, selling it to, uh, to, um. Uh, Fish and Wildlife and, and, uh, and.
So what, I mean, I'm not clear on, I don't recall them asking us for like a letter of support in the past, other than that one.
I didn't know one, I'm not.
Yeah, so I mean, we have no standing in this, you know, what is, what is the benefit of them getting a letter from us?
Well, did they pay us some?
You'd be giving it up.
Yeah, 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 well, no longer be taxable land.
Yeah.
Not getting much of it anyway.
Right, no, you're not, but, but you, you still getting something, so I think that's why they probably are required to ask for a letter of support. Um, do, isn't there some compensation from the state for state-owned land in town currently?
Your time like pilot agreements?
Yeah, like pilot, so, so is there nothing received from the state for all the state-owned land?
No, 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 there, there's a, there's a small number of pilot agreements. I know Newburyport has one for, and it's a modest amount of money.
Yeah.
Uh, I did some research on that four or five years ago.
Yeah.
And I got the list from the then assessor of, of the pilot agreements.
Okay.
I'm, I'm ninety-eight percent sure there's, the state doesn't pay us a dime.
Okay.
On, for prop, for like pilot agreement, I can, I can verify that, but I'm, I'm.
Okay.
I have that information somewhere.
Yeah, okay, I think there's background, any volunteers, yeah. Cause, you know, cause every time the state does take ownership of a piece of, of real estate and it is removed from tax rolls.
Yes.
It's not like I agree with Wendy, we don't have to give a letter of support, it doesn't carry any weight or anything, it's what, the significance.
So do we wanna have her attend the meeting to explain this or?
And probably an opportunity to learn about, especially with some of the other dynamics with this particular agency. That might be a good opportunity.
Alright, so let's do that.
Yeah, good, alright.
Other properties? Other properties?
D F G, Ash Street, Renabell.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. I don't even wanna be a deputy.
Alright, we'll reach out to Anne Jagman and invite her to a future meeting.
That's good, alright, I M H, so this is just a request for endorsement in the.
But actually, I could just throw, as a thought, just sort of a follow-on thought, um. My guess is that there is a, um. There's a, a, I'm not sure if a mandate is the right word, but the state has a goal to. the state has a goal to preserve a certain amount of land, particular forested land within the state um, for for, you know, environmental reasons and, you know, greenhouse gas, uh, uh, sequestration reasons, and my guess is that if there's a push to acquire land, it's it's partly because of that, also to, you know, it's contiguous with um, with other protected, you know, wildlife management land, so. Just, you know, I don't understand the background of why it's. I would assume the same as you're saying, I would assume they look at their properties and look at immediately. Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah. Not a big surprise and actually see downside. No, 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 yeah, and then when I was pointing out the tax roll thing, I wasn't objecting based on that, because as you said, it's probably a trivial amount, you know, I don't know what it's worth, probably less than a thousand dollars a year in terms of taxes on on that land. It's probably having houses built.
Yeah.
Right, all right. Uh, so the next item is the, um, so this is the requirement of the C P A funding application is to get letters of support from various boards. So we're being asked whether we would provide such a letter or vote to support this application. So this is for the um, update of the open space and recreation plan, which does um, make us, um. Thank you, brain cramp on the word, eligible for uh, grant opportunities in the state related to open space preservation. Any questions on the application?
It was very thorough.
The same name as you.
I said, yeah.
Is there another Wendy? Wait, 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 we better check that signature. Yeah, I just wanted the twenty-five grand seemed like a lot, they gave a little bit of backup there.
Yeah, so we're waiting for a detailed quote from N B P C, um, it's possible. So this last night, this was, the eligibility was approved, and this one we're gonna approve at the next meeting, we're waiting on letters of support. Um, a detailed quote or a more detailed quote from N B P C. Um, potentially, you know, we could ask another consultant to provide a quote, so that's what.
Yeah, we we wrote it in such a way that we we wanted to preserve that option. Um, so while the the budget request is gonna be based on the amount that N B P C uh, quotes us, we we have not ruled out, you know, uh, looking at other qualified vendors who may be able to support the primarily the public engagement process. The map updates, we already have a standard contract with N B P C with annual updates, so unless we needed something done more like in real time or dynamically, the map updates will be covered by our existing agreement with them. So we've been, uh, or our conservation agent's been talking with them, uh, really for budgeting purposes. Um, he did say at last night's meeting, uh, and, you know, we think twenty-five is probably more than is needed, but um, we we wanna make sure that we, uh, you know, and and just let's uh, acknowledge we had a turnover in the conservation agent position, we had a period of vacancy for two months, so, you know, I kinda tried a new agent like into this on variable background, so, um, you know, he he and, uh, you know, we've been working together on this, but uh, you know, we worked this together in in a span of a couple of, of a week, a week, so.
I I think it's a reasonable price, I looked at the, um, there's a database of other C P A projects, and they were generally thirty or higher.
You need a motion on this?
Yeah.
They're gonna make a motion that the select board endorse the open space and recreation planning funding of twenty-five thousand dollars supported by C P C funding.
Sorry. Do we wanna have the twenty-five thousand in there, or do we wanna just approve funding and support the funding application, cause it may change?
I think it's, I I personally would like to see it in there, because if it was to go up, it would have to go back, but that way if it does go down, it's not a
Okay.
And it doesn't uh, commit the board to a blank check if it goes up to
I'll do that contract.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? All favor? Great.
Who was the second on that one?
I.
All right.
Um, I did not look at the odd six minutes yet, um, what about the uh, detailed minutes of the May twenty-third meeting, is there anybody ready to?
So Max did send around an updated draft today.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Yeah, so in light of the continuance, I would say let's let's punt on that one. And whether, that's, this is kind of uncharted territory to provide that kind of detailed notes, um. And so whether you want to release it or not, or, you know, I mean, it's it's their draft, but 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 basically you all were at the Z B A meeting and you know, I I said what I said, and so I asked Max to, you know, listen and just so I knew, cause I had a couple of conversations with the applicant and conversations with Sam. And I wanted to make sure I trusted my own memory of what was said in a public meeting, as opposed to what might have been said in a phone conversation or in a meeting with Sam, so I had asked Max, really for my benefit, to to do that, and then he did such a thorough job. I do think that the information that has been provided to the town prior to the Z B A application, whether that's in a public meeting or not, I think should be on the record with the Z B A, I think they should be aware of that background, and so that's part of what I'm working with, you know, I wanna get, anything I know about this, I wanna get on their record. And so that was really the spirit of of my request to Max to put together the.
Now, this is not a legal.
No, it's not a transcription.
He did a very good job.
Yeah.
Like a lot of them to be like a rambling sentence, he condensed it down and gave with the right wording what was said.
Okay, so you you actually went through and.
Oh, I listened to it, I did too.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't listen to it, I read it. I guess they have no life.
There there were a couple, um, omissions that were significant.
Okay.
And I sent them to Max.
Yeah, so he, yeah, he.
And they weren't corrected in the packet tonight.
No, no.
He did this thing this afternoon.
Correct.
He got three out of the four.
Okay.
So there's still one that needs to be, which is pretty off.
Okay, so, all right.
I don't know if you have others?
I I didn't look over what he sent today, so, but I did send red lime.
Okay, any different than what I had, or you thought of others?
I I didn't see yours.
Oh, I can see you want to send.
I know, I just.
You're not looking at Chris's red line. So it sounds like.
Yeah, actually, I I I I wondered about that, um, so as soon as you mentioned that, um, is that appropriate for us to share that? Um, uh, outside of meeting. To share what? Uh, you sent us your, your, did you send us your comments?
I think you just copied.
I sent Angus, and everything I sent to Angus, I'll see see the chair, that's an obligation. Oh, it came to me as well. Did I? Okay.
I I don't know.
Either way. Okay, I gotta, okay, maybe I'm. They have, if I did. There was, there was one markup that came that I was scratching my head saying, should should this have been distributed or not? Um, and it seemed to me that it probably shouldn't have, but.
You know, minutes are one of those things, it's already happened, so it's not like you guys are convincing on like, what the minutes are gonna say.
It's a slippery slope.
We're not gonna be convincing on what we would have said.
He would have said that it already happened in a public meeting.
Right, just just taking the quick step back, I I I know that you hadn't read those minutes, but I, the uh, um, all the six minutes. But I didn't just have two things, I just, can I just give it to you now, so I don't, um, so when I close this document, I don't have to save it. Um, and that's in a, under, um, D Housing Production Plan Review. There's one word, it's, um, says halfway down that paragraph, it says this reflects a lower number. And I think that maybe it should have been, this results in a lower number, but I also don't know exactly what Chris said, so I didn't listen. I didn't go back and listen to the, um, so I think there was something that Chris might have said, well, I've seen increased aging in place in this. So, um, did that make sense, what I just said? Okay, and then the other one is, or the next thing is down, um, ten lines, twelve lines below that. There are six bullet points, or, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, number one says activate owned property to develop housing. Is that maybe supposed to be town-owned property? I I don't know, otherwise I don't know what's meant by activate town, to activate owned property to develop housing. So I'm guessing that was supposed to be town.
I'm wondering if activate is the right.
And it may not be either, yeah, yeah, but but, um, just activate owned property. Yeah.
Okay. Good. All right, the next item, general discussion, the first item is just kinda planning for the meeting next week. The board and commission chairs.
Rob said we might make it. He's gonna see that he can get in.
That's fine, yeah, a couple people have said, like, Liz is not available, and Bob James is not, so that's like half the minutes right there. Um, but I did ask him to send somebody this place, so I just wanna kinda talk high level about what we wanna accomplish here, um. I've copied you on the emails, so um, so I'll just read, I I made an outline, and I'm starting to work on slides, Angus and I are gonna work on the slides together, but I just wanna kinda go over with you what I was envisioning. Also, talk about whether you wanna take slides, you know, instead of having Angus and I do all the talking. Chris says no, I mean, I don't know what.
We can, you can overrule Chris.
Yeah.
You can, and watch, you go to Chris, he's gonna say next slide.
Yeah. So let me just kinda quickly go through first slide, just objectives.
After the brilliant job you did on the witty presentation, there's no way I'm gonna try and.
Been a bit deep in here. Um, my objective is to try to get all boards and committees in alignment with town, I mean, town priorities, I mean, is there anything else we want to get out of this meeting?
I think, I think for them to understand that, to see it, I mean, they were probably in the dark about it, to know, even when we sat here and Angus was going through it, it's like there's a lot of stuff there, and like you said earlier, they're sitting there gonna wanna have some low-level issue addressed, I think they have to see the priorities and and how much really is on the plate, so that they can appreciate it. So, so, so sort of piggybacking on that, so part of the initial presentation is gonna be a list of all projects?
Yeah, so maybe I'll just keep going through, we'll come back to objectives.
I never counted it, is it, are there a hundred?
Easily.
Yeah, you remember Angus?
Uh, yeah.
I'm sorry, I I I can't.
Here we go, his blood pressure just went up. All right, let me keep going along.
All right, yes, sorry, I I made a.
So second slide, just talk about like, not a board chart, but appointed committees versus elected committees. Uh, and just about our objectives of the last year to get the appointed committees in line with with our objectives, the questionnaire, and that kind of stuff. Um, I'd like to have a slide on staffing assignments, like, who are formally assigned to like the planners, assigned to planning board, who works as a liaison, like the conservation agent to plan, uh, open space, maybe, so just a slide that lays out. Uh, I do wanna have a slide with the the town government work pyramid that Angus has shown us about the baseline functions, the evaluated ones, and then the emergency ones that seem to dominate our entire work plan. Just to introduce that concept, so maybe they can understand that there are baseline things that have to happen every day, no matter what. Um, and then I think it would be good to have a list of the baseline functions, and that that would include the required projects that we identified in our our work, I think that should be um, just put it up there, we don't have to spend a lot of time, but just so they can see and share a number of things that are happening. Um, and then I think it'd be good, Angus, if you could, or one of us could just talk about some of the unplanned crisis-type projects that we've had to deal with in the last six months here, whatever you think is appropriate.
Or the last thirty seconds.
Yeah.
The thing that pops up that day.
Yeah. And then just a slide to talk about how we went about trying to manage this value-added project. You know, the two hundred or whatever there are, you know, by sign timeframe, you know, first identifying them. Um, so that would be just one slide, how we did it, and then I wanna have immediate ones, the near term and the long term. We could, I think, hand them out, so they have them there, some people have asked me to provide that before the meeting, I'd rather provide context in the meeting and hand them out, what do you think about that?
I would do the meeting and then again.
I think we could hand them out at the meeting.
Right.
Yeah, and and, you know, I would welcome discussion, but I don't wanna argue about every single one. My my vision is that they can take it back to their boards and committees, and if they have something they really feel is in burning need, they can, you know, reach out to us and we can talk about it. Um, and then I would like to have a conversation, maybe Chris, you would wanna leave this, is just about like, what what do, does everybody feel are the top issues in town, because it would help us in assigning priorities if we all were in agreement on like climate change is the number one issue, or whatever it is, and I think this leads into whether we need a master plan or not. So I'd like to get there, I mean, if that's something that we wanna ju- to address in the springtime meeting, you know, let's start now by getting people engaged with it, so I think that could be a good discussion, rather than us just telling them what our priorities are.
So I think this is good, and and I hope we get great, great turnout from uh, chairs and even some members of boards, commissions and committees, um, should this be promoted somewhat further, if we can, you know, we're only gonna have so much impact, but but it would be, the more people hear this, you know, the better, the better things are overall. Um, and, you know, we're not, I I don't think we're gonna fill a room and have to have standing room outside or anything, but, you know, if a if a handful of other people who would otherwise not show up saw something that caused them to come and listen and understand this, then I think, you know, there'd be a net you know, a net gain there.
Yeah, my only concern is if we get a lot of people that aren't the chairs wanting to ask questions, and so I really wanna focus on getting the chairs on boards.
Well, but but you being the chair here could designate that the only people that were, that were that are participating in this conversation are the chairs.
So you're talking about promoting it, like email?
Yeah, something like that, yeah. So along that line. And 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 we could, I'm sorry, Chris, but just to finish the thought, we could even just encourage people to watch it online.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 well, I mean, we'll we'll be recorded, but I just think the more, the more people understand how much stuff is going on, the better off everything will be, yeah. And so along the same line, I've been thinking about the fall town meeting, and this ties in with it. I think one thing it's probably critical to have in this, is a slide that talks about what's been accomplished in the last twelve months. Because it's staggering what the people in town all have done in the last twelve months, um, and I think if you do that, I think that should also be, uh, in some form or fashion, a report from selecting at the fall town meeting. Cause people come in and they sit there and they vote, they go home and they gross about it on Facebook, they don't understand that, once you fund this, all this action that has to occur, that has made this town a much better place to be, and the work that all these people are doing, so I think.
So what time period would that be, since since the last time meeting, or what what do you envision?
I would say a year, I mean, just, pick a time, I don't, I haven't defined it, I don't, you know, I just sort of thought, I don't think the average person on the street understands how much has really gotten accomplished, I mean, forget the little stuff, because you can't go through a hundred and fifty items. And I mean, pick the top twenty, and then say, yeah, I'm exhausted telling you about these, but imagine what it took these people to do it, and and they're still doing it every day.
Yeah.
And I think that kind of acknowledgement needs to be put out there.
Okay, that's good. That ties in with what you were saying, Angus, is, you know, trying to make it a positive.
Yeah, very much so, and build on the progress that's been made, and, you know, I really want it to come off as a, as a very positive kinda, this is the, we've got momentum, and all these things, and to keep these things going is, you know, sustained effort, and and while there's always, you know, run to plug in something new, until things drop off, you you really don't, you don't wanna take your eye off the ball and you know, on some of the major things where we are making major headway, and uh, and to keep it going and like you know, we'd have to be focused as a community, not just this board and and course staff, but, you know, the paid school thing, the whole community.
It doesn't even have to be something that's completed, you can say we've got the page, the report has been, if you, I mean, the bridge is obviously a huge one.
Yep.
The water, we've got some really big things that have, they're not maybe fully complete, but enough that uh, it's a huge benefit to the town, even to the state they're at, and I would do, I would start with that, to put the positive buzz, and then a lot of these people don't want, they don't wanna hear about all these issues that pop up last minutes, like, you know, whack them all with the gophers, because they have their own perspective, so I'd make it more positive than, we have to deal with all this too, you know.
But it's.
They don't understand it, no, I know.
No, but I I I mean, I like that pyramid that Angus shared, I don't, do you remember the one?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I I think that's really helpful. But if you wanna, um, go down that route.
No, no, I think they happen here, I don't, you know, I wanna itemize, these are the.
These are the twenty emergency.
That happened last week.
So would you prefer we don't have a slide, but just talk about it in the pyramid?
No, I think we got a slide, but I wouldn't spend a a significant amount of time on that.
No, I mean, so we're talking like twelve slides here, I I don't want this to be like really a lot of text-heavy presentation, just kind of using this archie points, all right, so going back to objectives, understand what's on our plate is one, which I think, you know, we um, get them all in line, and any other objectives we wanna highlight in this meeting?
Um, I don't know if it's an objective, I wouldn't wanna ask them if there's anything critical that's on their radar. Um, I don't know if it's an objective, I wouldn't wanna ask them if there's anything critical that's on their radar that we might have missed.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I I think we should say that we reviewed the questionnaires, but that doesn't.
That doesn't mean something hasn't popped up or something, didn't know the intent of the questionnaire was to gather this level of information particularly.
Yeah. And there have been a couple of things that were not on the questionnaire that um we need to add to this. Okay. Alright, so Rick, do you wanna, if if I make the slides or Angus and I make the slides, do you wanna like take some of them to present them, or do you wanna just have Angus and I do it?
Well, not knowing what they, what they're gonna be.
I I have a feeling it's gonna be tied to the wire, so. I I mean, what about if if each one of us took one of the timeframes and just led the discussion on that, is that Chris important? You don't wanna do it?
How do I do it, first of all, secondly, and I'm not, can't use that word. Then Woody presentation, I think you, I think you have one cohesive person doing it, presenting it. It takes the bumps out of the presentation, you know where you wanted to go, uh and quite honestly, you did a brilliant job at it, I think you do. A much better job than I would have been, so. Um, not chickening out, which I am.
Alright, Rick, what do you think?
Um, I I don't have a problem with doing it, but I'm not sure um from a continuity standpoint, if um. If if that'll go to disrupt the continuity.
Okay, I just don't wanna like, you know, take over the whole thing.
Well, I think, you know, both. I think, no, I didn't detect if I saw something that was off and not.
So, and I would like you to interject on the master plan, like hot issues.
Don't call it a master plan, comprehensive, we told you can't call it a master plan. No.
I know, I know. Comprehensive plan, alright, so anyway, alright, so we'll work on, so I guess maybe Angus, once we have this together, we can circulate the comments or.
Yeah.
That works out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why do you say that?
Well, no, just as long as they're, they're not.
Not to you.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Alright, great. What's next?
What are your working group?
Where are working group?
And I did go ahead and print a a hard copy, because it was just, I think it was just yesterday afternoon that I sent this around, so I didn't know if everyone would have had a chance, so.
Did you have notes from your meeting?
No, this is the draft letter.
Oh.
Just with my minor, minor markups, um.
I wouldn't have made it, because my letter was.
I thought it was good.
Yeah, I thought it was good too.
I really feel like we're taking the lead on this, which is great.
Yeah, so the intent, and I talked to Angus about this, is we'll craft this to be a little bit better. I did speak to Mayor Reed after our previous meetings and let him know that I'm doing this. And I intend to drop it on the committee at the September meeting, I would like to verify him. To see if he has any of his balls to put in, because he's been a a big driver of a lot of this. So just to be clear, what I would like to see is the process, you know, we'll go through it and get it close and send it to him and say, do you have any input?
Okay.
Although, you know, otherwise it's just me at this meeting and they're all gonna go.
Well, I think, you know, you saw, I I don't know if you've had a chance to review it yet, cause I just sent it out yesterday afternoon, but the notes from from the finance working group we had. It's it's, you know, I think something like this is is like a hundred percent aligned with what at least that subset of this working group feels.
Glad to read those minutes, because they basically said, you're a roadblock, it's done.
Yeah.
Um, the committee that I'm on, they're still.
Working group.
Whatever it is, they're still going, well, instead of having a majority to change it, we can go two thirds, everybody agree with that, and they're going, yeah, and Melinda's going. She ran it by city council, eleven to zero, they are making no changes to the agreement at all. She said that twice in the meeting, so, and they said, well, can you take a proposal if we craft it to, she said, no, they've already voted, so.
That's a diverse group of people, that's, that's not all one ideology, it's people on that council.
But you can appreciate their perspective, I mean, we would vote if we were in the driver's seat on that too, it's it's reasonable.
Their perspective is reasonable from sitting in their seat is what you mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause once you open up the agreement, as she said, it redistributes the uh expenses.
It 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 all of a sudden costs them a bunch of money, and, yeah. Who would, who would do that in their right mind, regardless of what you thought was right.
Yeah, I I don't have any edits to this.
I haven't.
I mean, really, you could just, it could just be number one, you know, the perceived by the agreement, but.
If they're gonna establish a commission, they wanna know what they're looking to get into. And they might sit there and say, yeah, we're doing this number one, we're not gonna, then you deal with it, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there was, there's one inherent, which one was it? I didn't fully agree with, but it was um, the the new report mayor had gone to legal council and they had a list of items.
Yeah.
And one of his was in here, so you know, I respect that for him then.
Which which one was that?
Probably removal of the school care member, um, I mean, that was a, a critical enough issue too.
Well, so then this goes to the working group and they'll give everything.
But actually, I I I'm glad you pointed that out, Chris, cause I I, that one kinda s- scrupulous, like a little bit like. Marginal, especially where item two, which is hugely important.
Yeah.
Kind of encompasses that.
I kinda dropped it in it because it was in their letter, I mean, I could.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it's as, as uh, it's, I don't think it's such a front burner as the other items identified.
We can pull that easy and then.
Well, or or. You, would it make sense to add in number two, something like we were suggesting that the appointments? And or replacements or something?
Yeah, something like that. Yeah, and and I like your, I like your phrasing, Rick, you know, so and or replacements or and or removal of that stuff, but something that's less, less pointed. I can see this coming off as like, having some agenda behind it, which it doesn't, um, so I think that's framing.
Well, that's why I didn't even give a specific remedy, I said, the commission addresses will give us their suggestions, so.
So what, what's your thinking on number six?
So, that that was my note, the, yeah, so basically, this is, I I just, I didn't have much time, so I just threw it in just to kind of capture. The thought, but but the idea here being what what uh, you know, where the the agreement creates Prop two and a half. So you have this scenario where a project is, is approved at the region, but then, you know, community. Acts needs uh debt exclusion to pay their share, the debt explosion does not pass. They then are stuck with the bill and they have no choice but to cut their operating budget. To to keep it within the levy limit, so there's a way to articulate that very well, and I think if anything, that could go to like, you know. Point two or point three, cause that's one of the single most salient points.
That was Georgetown's problem if they'd have passed the project.
Yeah, and like Steve Crane and M. Switch has been really.
And also Riley, wasn't Riley really concerned about that?
I think everybody, a lot, you know, George Rowland and Merrimack were quite concerned.
But that in a, in a certain indirect way gets addressed by, if you have an opportunity to modify the agreement. Without a.
But, but I think the part of why I think it's important to, to specifically reference Prop two and a half is just to remind the legislators. That it did not exist when this agreement was passed, and it was transformational. Uh, in nineteen eighty or eighty one, whenever it was approved, and and so the fact that. This creates that and doesn't account for that, and and therefore creates this potential where the project is approved, but the funding is not approved. Like that, at a logical level, if it's articulated properly, I think anyone would look at that and say, well, geez, that doesn't make sense, like.
I think that reinforces point number one.
Yeah.
Tremendously, because you, if you can't fund this project, you have to modify. Well, yeah, I mean, it sort of goes with, with what, you know, uh, the D O R would require, which is that you can't. You can't issue a contract for something if you don't have the money for it.
Appropriation, right, right.
It's important to follow that specifically.
Yeah, it's it's a, it's a major, major structural defect.
You work on the wording on that one?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that.
Oh, that's good though, that's good enough.
The other thing is, we just talked, I wanna add in, I talked about Mayor Barrett being pretty blunt about no change. I'm gonna add the sentence in, is that in further, she has stated that her city council.
Yeah.
Voted eleven not.
Very important to add to this, and and yeah, I I.
Dump that in there.
Yeah, so it's not just her, yeah, and I, yeah, I changed the wording a little bit, just to to de, kind of try to depersonalize it. Uh, changing it from her, from she to her administration, but but. But to refine that to say, in the city council vote, that's after, that's, that's huge, cause it's not personal, it's, and it's not about, you know.
I will add that sentence in, I'll take number four about removal and dump it in under number two and send it to you, and then you can. Craft your wording and then we'll go.
Okay.
When's the meeting?
Twenty fourth.
Something like that. Oh, geez, twenty, it's gonna be a hell of a week.
I'd love, I'd love to be a client while I'm at the meeting.
It's gonna be here.
Yeah, we'll post the meeting, where, you know, it's, it's.
Not to participate, but just.
We'll turn, I'll turn the cameras on for you, when you can watch them on.
I did offer up a Zoom option if anyone wants it, and I haven't had any response, but it probably will end up being hybrid, I would assume there's gonna be.
Like I said, the anticipation, once we get this good enough, I'll run it to Sean Reed and see if he wants any input. And I'll print out a couple of.
So is this gonna be a surprise?
I'm not sure, we, let's talk further about.
Do you wanna put an agenda?
There might be, like, like, it's, there's no. You know, we might, we might, um, where I'm on the, you know, I'm on like the finances working group, I think you're on the regional agreement working group, is that right, Chris?
Agreement, procedures and administration.
So, you know, I think, let's talk about like how, how to get the outcome we want, you know, cause I think if um. If, if we shop it around ahead of it, um, not necessar, anyhow, let's talk about it.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's talk later.
I don't know if we need the Columbo moment. You know, that like dramatic, like.
Alright, great, well, thank you, Chris, but you're heading.
And then just in other news, while we're on the topic of of Woody, uh, you know, obviously there was a kickoff. So, we saw the response.
Pretty disappointing.
Uh, which I think.
Mayor was not invited to either, I spoke with Mayor last night. Really?
Not last night, which, Tuesday night, Mayor Barrett.
Wow.
Yep, she was also not invited to that.
Just did not, does not get the message, you know?
She didn't have time for it, she would say.
Relative to that, with our meeting group, we had a lot of people who were in the group showed up too, but um. Mayor Barrett was here, as was the superintendent of Woodya, Maureen Lynch, and at the end. Her comment was basically, you've gotta do something, you can't let this cool, you know, she was death real, so I know what she.
Maureen Lynch or, okay.
You know, so I know that she and Mayor Barrett were very close together, but there was a bit of a disconnect. What are you, Paul? She, she was very clear, uh, almost panicked, that they need to do something, and that this, and I think she sees that this project's process is a dead end. Too, so.
Alright. Next, Angus, one more comment, sure.
In our meeting, uh, again, Sean Reed of Newbury Port said at least twice. If the NECO project is to go forward, we need to have the regional agreement squared away first.
I think that's true, it's what it is.
Nobody's listening in this group, I, you know, I had to come out and say it, it was.
He said that in the meeting?
Oh, yeah, listen to me, twice.
It's a, it's a good idea, cause it's his idea.
That's okay, I don't care, that's the credit, as long as people are starting to catch on, it'd be helpful.
We lose all our leverage if, if it happens after.
Right.
You know.
Like Neil Harrington from Salisbury is saying, well, if the state contributes more and the number comes down, it becomes palatable, we can afford it. That's not the point, the point is you've got your leverage system.
Well, and and it's obviously in the interest of uh of Woody and everyone to, you know, uh, um. Favorable to Woody to, to put the project in the best position to succeed. And so even just from a pure like political standpoint in terms of getting the votes, that climate is gonna be very, very difficult. If the regional agreement's not modified, so even if you're looking at it purely from like advocacy for the project. Is still very much in their interest to get the agreement modified, just to try to change, you know, the tenor of the conversation. Because otherwise, what what I, my working group is saying is, you know, you're gonna have the exact same outcome. Of of uh, you know, people can't bow about the allocation.
Well, that's what they said, if you don't do it, it'll go back out to vote, it might be a closer vote, but it's still gonna fail.
Yeah, and that's not in anybody's.
No, no.
It's a waste of time and money again, yes.
And and, you know, getting ever closer to the cliff, where the building becomes, you know, unusable.
Alright. Page school study.
So.
Segue.
Oh, boy.
So I assume we all got our comments into Christine, I saw that was submitted to.
Yep, she's, she's, uh, she built them into a consolidated PDF, uh, that's been provided to the vendor. Uh, and uh, she did, I talked to her earlier today, and she, um. Was, she left some things for me late this afternoon after I was in this meeting, so. Uh, but she, this ties in really with the uh discussion of the the entryway. Um, she, she was gonna go through the report and anything that seemed like it might be something that we might wanna consider as an immediate need. Uh, she's gonna, she was gonna like create, you know, like a list, so that, and that ties into this, you know. From entry discussion, um, she can pass that around, this just came in midday.
Before we go into that, I just want to, I mean, are there any high level issues that we just wanted to comment on from our reviews of the report? Um, I mean, one thing that that I thought is the asbestos and lead, um, abatement needs were not really addressed. And that was a huge part of the cost, um, my other concern is, is basing this on four hundred and fifty students.
I had the same comment, yeah, three fifty or less, cause.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I think the biggest takeaway has, or what, I think it's way too colorized in the positive. With the ability of that building to go over twenty years.
Yeah.
At a modest number, I mean, I think they, they missed something there, it's just, when they talked to us, what, back in February, I was pretty enthusiastic about it. And you read the report between, you know, insulation and wa, and typing and and uh, safety code issues and elevators, and as you said, asbestos. These are not insignificant issues, and at the end of twenty years, you you patch them and fix them, you're still gonna jump building this. Excessively, grotesquely, too large for your needs.
I was really struck by how much.
Well, thousand square foot classroom, they're like massive.
Yeah.
Um, if you could reduce it down to the square foot that you need, your operating costs go down, everything goes down.
Yeah.
So I, you know.
Yeah, the other thing is the assumption that we have to factor in the children's castle with.
I have heard that many times, yeah.
Think that's a requirement, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah. So take that out of your hundred and eight million dollar building cost, you don't need that twenty million dollars to build.
Yeah, that's a, that's a free or lease, that's not a.
Money maker.
You, you know, I I I agree with that, but I think, you know, we're. Childcare is a big deal, um, and lack of childcare is a real big deal. And, um, you know, we're not, the town is obligated to do anything about childcare, obviously. But it, um, I I I'm just concerned that, you know, there's currently capacity. And removing that capacity is gonna have a really detrimental effect on a lot of people. And I know some people are gonna, you know, somebody's gonna say, well, not everybody there is from West Newbury, that's true. Um, but it's gonna affect a lot of people in West Newbury. If if.
If all it is a sale, it's gonna be perfect.
For all five children.
Yeah. Rick, any high level things that takeaways from, I mean, I know you've been more involved in this than Chris and I have, so.
Well, I mean, for me, the the biggest thing is, uh, there's, everything about the building is a mess. And I think, or worse, like everything about the building is a mess, but, um, you know, the uh, um. Sort of the energy related issues, you've probably not surprised that I mentioned that, but the energy related issues are only gonna become more demanding. Um, there will be a point where that building has to be efficient, and that building can't be efficient.
Well, it can, but it's staggering cost.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for the cost of building two new schools, you can make that building really efficient, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Alright, just wanna, since we haven't really been able to talk about it, just wanna kind of hear feedback on it. Alright, so moving on to the front entry.
Yeah, so this one, and I think you guys remember this, but everyone's aware that a chunk of that fell down earlier this calendar year. And and so that was, uh, it uh, was part of the masonry kind of, um. I mean, that the scope there was really the 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 sills, uh, but this became evident as a a concern. So it became, you know, something that we put more on toward, and uh, so you can see, you know, I wanted an email. On toward and, uh, so you can see, you know, I wanted an email sent earlier today. Uh, the next steps we're taking, we've got a meeting tomorrow with, uh, myself, Christine, Brian, um. Jonathan Seymour and, um. Oh, I'm forgetting. Um.
Wells?
No, they're not, not part of the meeting tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Um, anyhow, we've got a meeting tomorrow. Uh, now, uh, anyhow, and Christine is, so. There was a structural engineer who was part of the team due to the overall study, so we thought it would make sense to have them provide us a. Scope and budget of basically what's outlined in the G and F memo as, as the recommended next steps. So I expect to receive that and, uh. Once I have that, I'll share with the board, and then, as I said in the email today, I think the questions would be both. Um. Now, do you wanna go forward with that? If so, give some direction on how important or not important is the preservation of this, uh. Now, um. This decorative panel, um. If there's a couple of different ways they could go about the assessment, that are more or less disruptive to that, um. And also, this is really the, what I mentioned a couple of minutes ago with Christine going through it, if there's any other near term things that come out of the, that are in the report that's. Strike people as, you know, we really shouldn't be waiting six or eight months, if we do end up. Deciding there to, uh, seek funding, whether through our, or a special town meeting article. To deal with this, might we match some other age school Band-Aids? While we're at it, so I, I don't know, where we've got, Christine and I talked this morning, like. We're well aware the warrant closes a week from tonight, there's not a lot of time to, you know, get our heads around all this, but that's gonna be the approach that we're taking.
I mean, good, in, in the near term, you know, based on what was in the, I did, I did get around to reading this today, um. Um, and, and the near term. The, the entrance isn't. Gonna get substantially worse, I don't think. If it was closed and not used for several months.
Yeah, we could close the entrance, the, the only thing is we need to really. Like with plywood, block that stairway.
Right, right.
Um, but yes, that could.
And, and I'm just thinking in terms of. Not spending dollars. You know, not throwing good money after that, and not, not spending dollars on something that. We can survive with for five years or something like that, um. And, and, but which would ultimately just be thrown away.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, you know, so I, I guess I, you know, my thoughts on this whole thing now, this whole school now, or. You know, how can, what, what's the least we can do to get by until we figure out what we're gonna do instead of this school, because this school. Is not gonna do the job for the town, that, that's my personal opinion. It's, yeah.
It's the other person, of course.
To your point, Rick, I, I'm a hundred percent with that.
Yeah.
Uh, if they just took concrete and parged it over and tell if it was structurally integrity and held it. I think you wanna get that opening open, it's, it's a pretty significant egress, if there was, uh, any safety issue. You had the accident, it'd be really handy to have.
Well, actually, was it, wasn't it in this, what they talked about, the egress?
It doesn't, it's not necessary for code. Uh, at all, uh, so you could close it from a moral standpoint and, and a code standpoint, you can't create a dead end with a, a locked door, so. So the closure would need to be at the hallway, not like the bottom of the stairs.
So you're gonna have to spend extra to close it.
You know, I, and so this is, I don't know, yeah, you'd have to put some, I don't know. How difficult that would be, probably Brian can probably do that, but I, we're, we're trying to get our head around it, but yeah, you could, you could close it from a code standpoint. By yourself time, uh, and, but these are things, like, we just got this today, you know, where Jonathan Seymour, we haven't even had a conversation with him, we've sent it to him, but. A lot of people have to be part of these, these discussions, uh, because we might, we might all feel, uh, you know, the pragmatic approach is just. You know, close the entrance, but, but supply wood on the hallway, so there's no, you know, moral hazard. Uh, but some, someone said something about like, uh, that front. Stairwell, is there a stairway down, like?
Yeah, on the side there is.
Yeah, so is that, you know, where does that go, like, we're, we're still. I've spent the least time on the site relative to like Christine and Sam and, uh, and Brian, uh, and Jonathan, so. So I'm kinda just there to learn, um.
I'd like to see the approach being that we'd like to get it repaired, doesn't have to be beautiful, but structurally sound enough.
Yeah.
At the least expensive cost, so we can get the doors open in an emergency situation.
But I think, you know, Rick, I heard, heard your, your comment too as well, and I think, uh, I don't know, Wendy, if you have, uh.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't wanna spend any money that we don't have to, until we know.
This is the problem, we know, even if we could get an MSBA line real quick, you're. Ten years down the road from now before you get into school.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to put significant money into that building on a regular basis, just to keep it from deteriorating. Significant.
Yeah.
So, I, I, you know. I, I understand we wanna pinch pennies, but. You gotta be careful when you're pinching too.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I, I look at things that I consider to be life safety related, and those are paramount.
Those are valuable, yes.
You, 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 you gotta fix those, but, you know, here, actually, you know what it is, Chris, the second paragraph here, you know. Regarding occupancy capacity in the construction documents for twenty twelve, twenty thirteen renovations. I'm gonna read all that, according to calculations done in the project, floor one has an occupant load of five hundred and twenty-six. And requires three exits, as designed, floor one has an egress capacity for two thousand people and has nine exits. The original front entry provides an egress capacity for three hundred people, so if it were to be closed, the remaining exits on floor one would have an egress capacity for seventeen hundred people. And eight exits, which is still well beyond what is required.
Two and a half times.
Right, yeah, so, so that, 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 I mean, that was my point, the.
Suppose it's a catastrophe, and you're eight feet away from that door, and you have to go to the other end of the corridor to exit the building, it would have been prudent to have that doorway accessible. We don't know what's gonna happen, this crazy stuff happens in schools every day anymore. I'd rather have variable options rather than we comply with code, but it's still didn't work too well.
Yeah, but there's already.
We don't know what it's gonna cost.
There, there, there's already two and a half times what is necessary for egress capacity, and I mean, that's all, that was my.
So, so let's, let's. Take a look at the numbers, cause to close, to plywood frame and close off an entry is gonna cost you a certain amount of money, it could be the same as to. Parge in the concrete.
I think you're not gonna parge it in anyway, even if you close it, just so it doesn't, you know, you're not gonna want stuff dropping off the, the fence, right? Yeah.
That's sort of our.
All right, well, so. I guess we'll find out, right?
You know, keep you guys apprised, uh, and I'd say if, if, you know, uh. I don't wanna break any quorum issues, but, you know, we have this meeting tomorrow, I mean, I would welcome either or both or all of you, I don't want you. Deliberating or, but, but the more hands-on and the more ear to the ground.
What time's the meeting in tomorrow?
Uh, it's, it's a zoom meeting and it's, uh, eleven o'clock. And, uh, if, if one, one of you or, if, if two of you. Join and don't say anything, I don't know, but I, I think this is all. The more that, you know, the more that you all are, you know, direct, the, I want you to have all the information that you need and.
Is it here in the building?
No, it's a zoom meeting. Yeah.
It's missing a vision here, just happened to walk by.
All right, well, if we're not saying anything, why?
It might be fine, honestly, you're not, I just, this is a, this is a unique set of circumstances, we got the warrant closing a week from tonight. Um, we've got decisions that would need to be made. You know, regarding how to approach this, and, uh. You know, if we're gonna put money toward it, where the money comes from, and, and we don't have a lot of time, and it's a life safety issue, so. Um, you know, I think if it's helpful to the board members to, you know, be, be right at the table, I fully welcome.
Or, again, you talked town warrant closing.
Yeah.
I was talking to Rob, that he's out of town, he said he would like to have the FinCon bylaw back on. Just relative to the quorum issue establishing that.
We felt to write. An article request. Oh, really, it's, you know, it's, yeah.
I, I'm just giving you the heads up, okay, tell him to write the request.
So, but also speaking of that, if the warrant closes next Thursday. Somehow we have to decide what's on the warrant before we start meeting the FinCon to approve or disapprove. So, I, I don't know if we wanna schedule a meeting after the chair meeting, or how we're gonna do this. I feel like our, our meetings through September are, are kind of. And, and I also wanna see if we can move the, um, the meeting with FinCon on Wednesday, the eighteenth, and we're having that Strong Towns event. Maybe to Thursday for that week. So. What?
We got that thing, I went back and emailed stupid, we have a meeting that night.
Yeah.
You just wanna have another meeting that week.
No, I just wanna change it to a different night.
But then you pick up the other meeting.
Oh, I mean, we're sponsoring it, I kinda should go. So, I think we'd have a meeting, no, we don't. That would be the nineteenth instead of the eighteenth, does that work for you guys?
Well, yeah, actually Angus and I talked earlier, and I guess, you know, and. I, I do, I have a meeting of the CIC on the nineteenth.
Oh, you do?
Nineteenth, I have a obligation.
Okay.
Um, but, but on the other hand, you, you know, if, if I had to make a choice, so, yeah. My primary responsibility would be here. But, Chris, you can't be there anyway.
I can be in big trouble.
Yeah.
Um.
I probably can't.
Right, no, I get it.
They said, what about, what about the seventeenth?
Tuesday?
Actually, how long with the meeting, oh, that's right, you can't get it, sorry. Never mind. Cause the, the CIC meetings aren't till seven thirty, but, um, but you can't be there.
I prefer not to be, on the eighteenth, that's a joint with FinCon?
Yes.
Remember Rob was jockeying, cause some guys could make it one night, others couldn't make it the other?
Yeah.
I think that was what we ended up with.
Right.
All right.
Can I throw out a crazy idea? I know you've already set October twenty eighth, there's no. For a town meeting. You haven't published a warrant yet, you could push town meeting into November, you wouldn't want it the following Monday, cause of the election, the national election.
Skip that meeting that week?
I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, but like, if the, if the calendar's starting to feel crowded.
It's definitely feeling crowded.
Yeah.
Um.
Then, uh, you know, there's, there's not written in stone anywhere, you know, the select board sets the date of the warrant, or sets the date of the meeting. First special town meeting, and, um, there, there was one time in the years I've been here, it did go into November, and it only happened once.
Was that COVID?
It, I don't know if it was COVID, I think that one of the reasons we did it, or the board did it, was. Uh, it was gonna take longer to get free cash certified, maybe because of. Turnover, and they knew they wanted to be able to appropriate free cash, and you can't do that till it's certified, so, um, you know. With, with Jenny doing what she does, well, free cash, that's actually certi- already certified, actually, that just crossed my mind. In old days, like, it used to be like, hopefully we'll get it by November, it was certified like a couple of weeks, and Jenny's amazing, um, anyway. But, yeah, there's nothing to say, it has to happen in October.
Yeah.
So, you know, um, there's a town meeting and a town next week, like, yeah, yeah, you can have a special town meeting. You know, on, on what, as long as you meet the notice requirements, you can have it.
All right, so if we did, did that, we're just seeing the following Monday?
How about this for a thought? To be, throwing out another strange idea, Saturday, remember the, after the last one, a lot of people were even saying, why don't we have town meetings on Saturday? The fall would be a good one to test it out on, because it'd be a, a reduced number of articles allegedly.
And there's no summer sports.
And see if anybody shows up, you know, I mean, they're not gonna show up in the fall, they sure as heck aren't gonna show up in the spring.
That's, that's a good point.
So that would be November second?
I, I would say with the national election, I would say go after that.
Please, no.
Yeah.
That would kind of put the pressure on.
Just look.
All right, so, so what are we doing here?
Well, I think that the, there's, so one thing is, this September twelfth is a warrant will close.
Yeah.
So I think one thing to unpack is. I think when we'd set that, I, I think I had envisioned you'd be both closing it and deciding what was on the warrant, when you and I spoke late yesterday. Uh, you, you know, you expressed concern as to whether that would be too, there'd be time to do that, both because. You know, some things might be coming in right under the wire, as well as obviously the primary and, and important. Purpose of next Thursday's meeting is the chairs meeting, and we don't wanna dilute from that, if you've got, you know, if you have to potentially spend a couple of hours. Chewing on articles that same night, that kind of like undermines the purpose of the chairs meeting, so. I think Wendy, I don't wanna speak for you, but I think your thought was more, you'd be closing the warrant the twelfth, but not. Deciding that night what articles would be on, that kind of leads to a need for a subsequent meeting.
Yeah.
And so, and now with the Strong Towns, and if we're re-gittering with FinCon. It's starting to feel like October twenty eighth is just coming up too quick, and I, I have no problem with that at all. The only. Date on the backend of the calendar that I would say would be. Uh, you would want to. In the event that there was gonna be an article about free cash transfer to. Uh, reduce the FY twenty-five tax rate, which is a big if, but if there is an article, you would need that voted before. Uh, the tax rate recap, which is generally the, you know, second or third week of November. So you would need that town meeting vote before we could set the tax rate, uh, so. You know, there's not endless amount of time, but there's, there's two to three weeks after the twenty eighth, and I, I really don't think it would be a problem. Some people might, in the community, might, like. Be bent out of shape of like, why is it November, you know, but there really isn't a reason, it can't be.
So what's this additional meaning for, to decide which articles of the warrant?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that we have to do.
How many articles we expect in, in rough numbers?
Uh, rough numbers, I, I would've said about a dozen, I would say maybe more like fifteen, but in that range, um.
You check off the boxes, right, I mean.
We still have to have a meeting, so I guess the question is, do you wanna add a meeting after the board and committee chair meeting next Thursday?
What time does that must start?
Six.
Let's do that, uh, that, I think that's what we're gonna do.
And just review on that night.
Yeah, and let's just. Get it done.
So what time do you think the board and chairs will be over?
I was planning on two hours.
So eight, and we'll be out of here by nine if we do our.
And there's nothing else that can be added to the agenda, right?
I'll reserve the right to decide. Well, then we don't have a meeting the following week. Right?
Then we do the twenty sixth.
Well, that's the following week, that's two weeks after the, the twelfth.
No, but, well, then there's.
We have a joint meeting, yeah.
Yeah, there's a meeting on the.
Yeah, the joint, on the.
That's not, yeah, that's just town meetings, that's not a select board meeting, we're just.
Start that at six thirty, we could start at five if you want and get through ours.
On the eighteenth?
Yeah, or whatever night it ends up being.
Yeah, we could, we could meet immediately before we meet with the FinCon, so we could decide what we're gonna talk about with the FinCon.
All right, it's getting too late for this silliness, I keep. I know, so, this, I think this conversation's taking away.
I, 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 I honestly don't see why, why don't we do it? After, after the boards, committees and commissions.
Okay, and then that still doesn't help me decide what to do with the Strong Towns event, so you're saying we should just, uh.
Oh.
I do feel like I should be there, because I'm chairing the dress and we're sponsoring the event.
I'll push the meeting to nineteenth if you want, then.
What was the issue with the sixteenth or seventeenth?
Again, we're gonna have to disclose with FinCon, cause remember Rob was.
No, I, I, I understand, yeah.
I could do seventeenth, I could do sixteens.
I could do either, I could do anything that I, that week, I could do the sixteenth or seventeenth.
All right, so do you wanna propose that to Rob?
Uh, yeah, the sixteens or seventeenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we do have audit in, so we might need to have it in a different location, uh, but we could have it in the upstairs conference room, we have that with the Zoom enabled.
Um, can bring back the old chairs.
We could even, yeah.
I, actually, I, I would prefer the seventeenth, if we could do Tuesday the seventeenth instead of the sixteenth. Because I may. Been visiting my daughter every month, Sunday and Monday.
All right, so do we still wanna keep town meeting on the same date, or do we wanna entertain changing?
You don't need to decide that tonight, maybe if you wanna, unless you wanna decide it tonight.
No, I think we've, we've resolved the, the other issues.
I think you can keep it if you can, I mean, it's only critical if you have to move it, I wouldn't.
So will you get in touch with Rob, or should I reach out to Rob?
I've got it on my list, I'll do that, if he gives, if he gives me any guff, I'll put him in touch with you.
Bye. Great, all right, any questions on the correspondence, we're ten minutes past our nine o'clock deadline.
I think we just butt past and move on.
All right. All right, so we're moving to.
Motion to recess into executive session. I have to give specific reasons.
You could, you could just say as, as printed on the agenda.
As printed on the agenda.
Right.
And, uh, Adam, the, uh, board will only reconvene in an open session for. And, uh, out of the board will only reconvene in open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.